Siya me tse koka simulola, me mizozongi ilim eh me rebatla kore re sekera chokop batla rekadi rocha ya bawo banemba kilé eh pelekanako.
To kick off the proceedings of today, I will ask that we all rise and sing the national anthem and kindly request all men to remove their hats as we sing the national anthem. Thank you very much. Um. As I said, you you are heartily welcome to this public hearing. We are ready to start and we have here before us the Portfolio Committee on Transport from Parliament. If the sound people could help us, the sound quality needs some adjustment, there is echo, there is... So if you could help us as we go on. My name is Lisa Mangu, I'm the Member of Parliament and I will be chairing the session today. And I will introduce my colleagues who are here today. It's not the whole full complement of the committee, but I will I will introduce those that are with us. And on my immediate right is Honorable Miriam Ramadua, who is a Member of Parliament. It's okay, it's okay, it's okay, just the names please. On my immediate left is Honorable Makosini Shabangbo, Member of Parliament. Next to him, Honorable John Bilangulu, Member of Parliament. John, not George, it's John Bilangulu. And on the extreme left is Honorable Ketamabala Sitole, Member of Parliament. So the program is a very simple and straightforward program. And I will, I've already welcomed you, I will give you a brief overview of the Rail Safety Bill that we are conducting its public hearing for this morning. After that, I will allow for yourselves to talk to us as to what you would like to see included in this bill or changed, whatever the case may be. The process we are undertaking, it's a parliamentary process. And for the duration of this session, everything will be conducted in the parliamentary way, or should there be any need to invoke parliamentary rules, we will invoke them. The process today, it's not a process where we answer questions or a question and answer session. It is also not a process where we engage in debates on the bill or any other thing that might be affecting us. We are here to listen to you. So most of the time, we will be listening to you. At the end of listening to you, we will explain what will happen thereafter for purposes of the process. The process doesn't exclude, let me put it this way, there is an opportunity to do written comments or written submissions. On my extreme left, your right against the wall, there are people there who have got forms that they can issue to you to write your written submissions or they can assist you to write your input if you so wish. Also in your input, you are more than welcome to express yourself in your own language. We have interpretation services. A public hearing which we are undertaking today, it's something that the Constitution requires of us as lawmakers. The Constitution of the Republic implores lawmakers to make sure that there is public input in process of lawmaking. The Constitution also gives the right to members of the public to have their voices, their opinions heard in the process of lawmaking. That is why we are undertaking the process we are undertaking, it's a constitutional imperative. I will then go straight into the summary of the bill. The bill before us is the Rail Safety Bill. Once passed, this bill will replace the National Rail Safety Regulator Act of 2002. Of 2002. If you look at the title of the bill, "Rail Safety Bill", it does express the fact that this bill is about rail safety. So we will request that when we get to the opportunity to give our inputs, we limit ourselves to what is before us, rail safety. As I already said, this bill is now at a stage of public hearings, which we are here for, but the process of written submissions is still allowed and open till the end of March 2023. The hearings we are undertaking were carefully selected where we go to engage with the community. Amongst other things, in the selection of the venues, we looked at the past rail incidents. We looked at damage to rail infrastructure. We looked at the high-volume corridor for both freight and passengers. We looked at the rail history and the intermodal transport facilities amongst others. In a bullet form, what does this bill therefore seek to achieve? Firstly, it seeks to provide for the regulation of railway safety in the republic. It does provide for the continued existence of the Rail Safety Regulator, which was established by the Act of 2002. The bill also provides for continued, rather for the board and governance structures of the regulator. It provides also for rail safety permits. It also provides for rail safety information and monitoring systems. As we all know that legislation without a legal framework for its enforcement is ineffective, this bill also provides for a framework to enforce compliance. The bill also provides for an appeal mechanism for those who might be aggrieved by one thing or the other. Also provides for a transitional mechanism from the old act into the new act once it's passed, so that there is no gap. Three focus areas that I would like to lift in a summary, three focus areas. As I already said, the bill is predominantly about safety. It's safety for passengers, rail workers, rail and related infrastructure. Safety for vendors at stations and communities that live along rail lines or near stations. The second focus area is for additional rail access by third parties as well as their responsibility. And lastly, it's about the improvement of the Rail Safety Regulator and its functioning. I will then go to clause by clause, but quite swiftly as possible. Clause one really contains definitions in respect of the provisions of the bill. Clause two deals with the application of the bill and any conflicts that this bill or might arise at the implementation of the bill and other existing legislation. Clause four makes provision for the minister to give certain exemptions in the application of the act. Clause six simply states the objects of the Rail Safety Regulator. Clause seven deals with the functions and powers of the Rail Safety Regulator. It talks about those that are mandatory and those that are discretionary. Clause nine provides for the governance structure, the board, and all that goes with it. Clause ten deals with the composition of the board for the Rail Safety Regulator. Clause eleven regulates the appointment and the process of appointment of board members. Up to clause fifteen, clause fourteen, clause fifteen, it also describes the functions of the board and it also regulates the criteria of which a person can be disqualified from being appointed as a board member. I jump now to clause twenty-one, which is beyond the board, all the others, nineteen. It also is really around the board and how it functions and how the minister appoints deputies and so forth. Now I jump to clause twenty-one. Clause twenty-one empowers the minister to dissolve a board and what the reasons could be and what the board members are entitled to if they are dissolved by the minister. Clause twenty-three, clause twenty-four deals with the appointment of the CEO and the raising of funds or how the RSR or the Rail Safety Regulator is funded. I jump to clause thirty, which I regard as one of the most important clauses. We spoke about safety permits or rail safety permits earlier. This clause thirty makes provision for the processing and application for safety permits and steps that the Rail Safety Regulator ought to follow in that process. Also deals with the issue of permit fees to be paid and all those financial matters as they relate to rail safety permit are covered in clause thirty. Clause thirty-two and clause thirty-three deal still with rail safety permits, the amendment thereof, the process under which a permit can be surrendered in clause thirty-two and thirty-three. I jump to clause thirty-five, which deals with training institutions. This bill introduces the fact that a Rail Safety Regulator must evaluate prospective training institutions which would have applied. I jump to clause thirty-seven and thirty-eight. We spoke earlier about a safety management system and all the requirements there too. That's what clause thirty-seven deals with. Clause thirty-eight deals with the establishment of a consultative forum where the Rail Safety Regulator and operators can on an ongoing basis have an engagement. Clause forty-one introduces the issue of enforcement compliance that should be done by what is said are safety inspectors or rail safety inspectors. And clause forty-two up to clause forty-six deals with the powers and duties of these rail safety inspectors as introduced in clause forty-one. Clause forty-seven also continues with the powers, functions, and responsibilities of the rail safety inspectors. If we go to clause fifty, clause fifty-one, clause fifty-two. It deals with incidents and occurrences on the rail and circumstances under which the Minister of Transport may instruct certain investigations to be done. I jump to clause fifty-four up to fifty-six. These sections or these clauses provide for an appeal mechanism against any decision by an employee of the Rail Safety Regulator or a decision made in the name of the Rail Safety Regulator. Clause fifty-seven and fifty-eight provides for offenses and penalties in the event of non-compliance. Clause sixty-three up to clause sixty-five empowers the minister to make regulations concerning infrastructure and any activity affecting rail safety operations. Clause sixty-seven authorizes the minister to prescribe a scheme whereby the Rail Safety Inspectors may issue compliance notices. Clause sixty-nine, as I said in my introduction, provides for transitional mechanisms from the current piece of legislation into the new piece of legislation, so that there is no gap. into the new piece of legislation so that there is no gap.
Ya kahakileka buakatsimolo kong polelona ya bu sixty-nine e yoné ibu afano faka mo kwa opet di peto kodi kadi ruankaone khotro homola wabo holo holo koya homola wahaja no jana kwanke kha khotro kala di chayelo mo khareha melao eme eme bedi.
Last but not least, clause seventy provides for the means of repealing the current National Rail Safety Regulator Act of two thousand and two.
Me ya bu seventy yoná ya manafano fali chuno ya hori jano ho kana kapi mula mula wabo holo holo o inele hori uama na lese teo sata tshirele tse homo di porong inele mula wabo se chaba.
I will leave that summary there and although I've not gone through every detail, the intention was just to pick up certain areas that you might have picked up or areas that I think might require your attention.
Ki kara tachotro kana chobuka yoné e wu honefe la fao se kinakeleka hori sidira inele khotromolola khatlo tse inele hori lulu na lakatso ililoa di bona tse inele hori hongwe lukarata kachayala kazoni.
So at this stage, I will sit down now, I will do the listening.
Ka jalo kota kofitja jana no jana kitliyo pana fafa tsi tiru yame etan na hori zaja no.
And our colleagues, as I said, are there and their purpose is to record everything. So everything you say will be recorded.
Me ba diri kana banse fale ya kahakilelo bolela ba taybe ba rekota se ngulese ngwe sesi dirachalamfana se ngulese ngwe se usi buang se tabi serokotiwa.
Our request is that firstly, we limit our input to the rail safety bill before us.
Ka jalo relo kopa katswe tse hori buang fe la katsa tshirele tse homo di porong inele di tengtza mala kthomo ofa pele haro.
The second one is that we'll limit your input to a maximum of four minutes.
Me ya bu be di ko po ke hori diran hori katswe tse 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 yaloné eze me zo zo e kafikan bo holo hoo me zo zo inele me ne four.
We want to allow for interpretation and also other speakers to have an opportunity to give their inputs.
Re batagore re kono kuto loka le kui interpretasi se lusi buang le hori kapero kono kona ya baba wuchunu ya hori le bona ba kono kubua.
Lastly, when you come up, we request that you introduce yourself.
Me.
Who you represent, if you represent an organization, and we would like to have an indication whether you support the bill or you do not support the bill.
Me ko po ya bo raror kopa hori ha wala kubua uiki tsi si kanina lakahorikuena man le hori awi kete tse olé mutu kanlo si kozakahonale batu ba inele hori ueme labone ha wafeza obota losa hori a u amukalamo la kthomo onu kozakohana na le one.
We will now take hands and allow for people who would like to give input to.
Jano tala kopa hori lusile tse manzo ba kai so re kona koba na baba ratan kuthisa di chwaelo.
Show your interest by raising your hand. I will identify you. We request you come and take a seat so that we can move swiftly.
Bonza khatelaya kha katswe tse kha kotsu le tse le choho re kusupé me o kha kudulabuti di donse u di kona molangse no re kona kotsu le la pele kale na na olaro na kabona.
How many chairs do we have there? Ten, alright. I'm ready to take hands.
So ki se ametsu kusupama nzo ba kai so.
I'm already seeing the hand there. My brother with a brownish cap, you are number one, come forward. There, number two. Yes, you, number two. Number three, with that white shirt, yes, you are number three, you can come. Number four, you can also come. Anybody this side I'm missing? I've got four hands. Five, you may also come. Six, eh, seven. Anybody else? Will there be more hands after the seven? I'm sure they will whet your appetite as they speak. Okay, let's start with these ones and then we will take another round.
Good morning. Still morning, yeah, good morning to everybody. My name is Neva Ndube. I'm a ward committee member of one-one-nine in public safety. So I haven't looked at it thoroughly of the bill, but I'll give myself some time. But what I can raise of now is about the safety of the commuters, the public transport users like in this instance, the railway. I'll be short. Uh, the first thing that I will appeal to you, my leadership, is that let us have some safety ambassadors coming from the same community where these railways run so that they take ownership of these infrastructures as we have eh eh learned in the past of the vandalism that has been happening. So some kind of a workshop needs to be in place to teach people on how to take care of their infrastructure. That will also teach our community members and on how to 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 be responsible citizens or commu- community members. And then what I will also ask is that this kind of vandalism that we have experienced, it should be taken as like eh eh, what can I say? A treason. It's a serious, serious, serious problem. It should be treated as treason and harsher sentences should be eh eh in place. And then some kind of workshop, you have mentioned that. And then the railway infrastructure should also be para- parapledic friendly for those that are in wheelchairs and not able to 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 assist themselves in doing whatever they need to do in their infrastructure, like the stations and stuff. Thank you.
Kime la mbiastulo, ipitola kake na eh Neva Ndube me ke emela ward one-one-nine ke kasa public sector e wu. Hakiaka ka bale monyeta wa oseba bilena ya puluke. Impaleha wale jualo ke abona hori ibuaka tsa tshirele tse ho ya bapa lami. Impaki klaguia di nklaha semalo ma ba pileona ka kabukutuanyano. Obana hala bilena ibuaka tshirele tse ho ya bapa lami ya se chaba. Impajola kharate iba hori se chaba sesi nyelo ke tipe ya 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 di tereni hangaka. Me riakata ba harika bona batu batshana lelona batla mona batlo rutea se chaba ka hori baba bale juang tipe ya bona. Batu baluka la huruta ele hori ebbe ba ahii bana lema ikarabelo. Useniya ha tipe ena wetsa hala batu ki ukangwa ele hutsohela musoma tseka patlize. Me gusloka hala hori batu ba ezansiu kobe le kotu e holo inele hori batu ba tayfumaana. Tipe ena ya relwe batu sika basluke la utse iba hori ki arona ka wafe.
Eh, good morning, honorable members. Eh, good morning, people. Eh, my name is Dakalani Ramaphosa coming from Ward one-one-nine, eh, Rachenchi. Eh, I've got, I've just got a few questions eh on the bill. I don't know if, maybe by the time we were making the bill, were you aware of this? Number one, the first question will be on the security companies which are appointed for the railway lines. Eh, how fit are they to be appointed for the security? Wuti ba 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 begi poro. Then, on the power cuts, because we've experienced Amatrain in Sanukamba, there are power cuts, the safety within Ilentole on the bill, how does it eh respond to 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 that previous elogusa? And on the officers which are uh butin, which patrol on the trains, eh, is scheduled some? Is it for every train or is it limited like before? For Amatraina sixteen, Amatraina ntaba macpeda? So those are the kind of questions. Number, the fourth question is eh previously on the security companies, we've had women working night shift ba bakati poro whereby there were incidents whereby women were being raped and being killed throughout Ilentole. So on the bill, has it responded to those kind of challenges? Then on the other one, there are areas whereby we'd say expansion of of the railway line. Eh, bill, does it talk of the, does it talk of the expansion of the railway line? If yes, eh, how many kilometers does it eh, is it going to, who who looks on? Esu shinja gwoy. Then on the other one, I think, I mean, on the security officers which are deployed amongst eh in the railway lines, I think it should stop but deploy one, one security. Then after a kilometer or five hundred meters, it's one security also. I think there's no safety gungial because we've, we've, I was once a security also eh in a railway line whereby it's, 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 it's very scary in the ends of a la paya. You can't defend the railway alone. So on that, maybe at least three people per post can assist in that. Then also, we need dogs eh in the railway lines. There must be dogs because railways, it's not about the stations but because the infrastructure eh change why. I just forget the the thing which they steal. There's a box which they steal the thing. Once they steal the thing, the whole, the whole platform, like the whole eh station to station is off. So on that thing, I think we need to extend eh Amatrain officers and also have dogs on that. Coming to eh eh defense of the security eh securities, there's a, there's a, there's a defense weapon which they're using. It's like hispam, Sumataps. It's not the gun which I'll say eh eh it can defend you. So when it comes to 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 eh Amatrain resources, the securities which are using, can we please try to outsource better eh better resources for them? Because they can't even depend themselves. Then when it comes to response time of the appoint, of the appointed eh security companies, they are always failing the the deployed security officers on the ground because eh mostly you'll find that the incident happens now but the the respondent will be after an hour late. So will the amendment bill? Can some of those things be 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 raised? Thanks.
Kambingela la ikamala mutagalani Ramaphosa kivela prago ward one-one-nine. Ngifusu kulumanaka onje impeni mbozimtsa tsu inginayo mailana lo mso swivinyalo o kalumbuso utse umailana eh nono kate ba kashayo la paya gusie ingabe ono kate ba kashayo ba ofane na lo msebenzi balunge de yinu gusie banganwazuka te la paya es dimelin. Oguesbi li umbuzenda umanu ngamga kwa kesu kesike u familia u ngamoga la paya manche eh eso pepa zona simiganjani ngifusu kwasu gusie ingabe umso swivinyalo uso kulumana nenda baso pepa uma ukesu ngamogin. Oguesa tsu kunama officerza patrola la paya u is scheduled saw, ingabe simiganjani eh ingabe boneke ba bege lo gusie ba kate es dimela zone ke norma kunes dimela es ketshekile abas katayo. Oguesine manane inkampani zona ke es katayo la paya eh kona basenze psuko kotu agesi esu esu eguna shasa nabaswe ngulwaya na bulawaya kobe kona abantu abakatayo. Sena ti lo mso swivinyalo u ngape gana na lota bangon na lo futu lubanda gwaen. Ogune ngifusu kulumanako uta ba lo gunuejwa eh go chaani la paya uso hamakoni es dimela eh ngifusu kwasu ngamabanga ogusi umagunuejwa kuba ma banga amanganani ma kilomisa amanganani ogusi loko ingabe kupaliwe na ulepi desu kulumanayo. Ogune uta ba refutu labono kate ogusi sena si guno kbewa bonoka da basugani kama kilomisa nubango fava mitas kuba onokato yeto la paya no muñyo yeto la paya namingena ba onokate loko aguslo ngeleni ngambonoka da ngoba pelo muntumaye yeto e postin ala pepe sena ti banganabatsa tsu ogenani eh enda wene uta ba ekatin. Ogune sena si ngamakoni zinja esifara la payasbe essebenzi na bonoka da ngoba hunen nganasi ndala paya es moshalay uno ogune ngatkaza ngutsinje itbogisi tsi zeni ele konna la ma kogislaa ayamo shalaa kulu la paya ma platform sena sige ngamakoa ne zinja esofara essebenzi nabo onokate. Eh ogune wesokepa eh sena tinge sho ne skali es ni onokata sena tu bangonyana banganini wa ndiri es kali es nginalu usizo. Eh ogoktina eh inele inkampani lezi zono kate na zo futu es gesbizu gusima zone nela makoni kengekon zia pozo kfigu sologusi ifasakpele ngishi hori imbalasena snaloko ngapa la paya ogusi yimagwenzo kanga ononya bon.
Eh, kirewa monyeta ona. Ibisola kake Simon Ramahara. I'm from eh key ward committee Portfolio Transport for Ward seventy-three. Eh, kahayi ibu izedin setin zedi chalusizi ababili zedinza safety saka keworogiskeka repita mchomunze setin zeba dibolete. Ntwe mchokoe na ke shebile mola kitaba ya e bili ka buangka yoná ya overcrowding. Eh, re bela tse overcrowding kala baka la hori batuka hara di tereni le ho kaeza hala hori each oru wetsa hala le horu ho ba analysis instances kaba sitwile mota olon in terms of infrastructure wise. Eh, eba to batle tse kama hara ha traini elaka onale possibilities ya hori kala losers chava sese nata kaba kafela la horu hosna control ya the number of the people who baba tama ilenba kene kama hara ha coach hates the alley ato hori ya ko di station in zedinka ofa ba. And barricades here line is another sport. Na konge engata husewidi siwa the pelisaid moma site in zele ono hori batuleheba ya utu ona obana esatrela eh safety concern batama ya batuwa di pelisaid itsela and then they but accessa di di into zera. I think most nan onegana roho ba leli the cameras that it's monitor on the line ya 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 moditzeni rizama ya mote. Or etle i kono hori le ho ka vale any incident e twile eh death footage i kono assista le ma security atavengase bezamoho fana ka reporter etar enhe ya ho minister roho schar ya fa eh city's factory sort of eh 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 etaba kotofa za ono hori eh wu nte musevi tu oh right hori ba di melaneli the outcome ya reporter eh. Nekseba twaya olo ba neki feba banswa kagi ala wu.
My name is Simon Ramasa and then I'm a member of the ward committee eh which is actually a part of eh of of the transport committee. Eh, there, there's a lot that has already been said eh this morning so I'm not going to be too long. But the most important thing that I would like to mention is the overcrowding that is actually taking place within our trains. Um, what happens is that this is almost out of control. So I would like to suggest that just in case there is an incident or maybe something does happen, it should, it would, it would, it will definitely happen that we're gonna have a lot of, a loss of life eh because of this situation not being well controlled. For an example, we've got some barricades or the pelisaid and then it is a norm that people actually break through these ones so that they can actually be able to access the rail lines. And when that happens, we wish maybe we could have some cameras that can actually monitor the situation, that can actually make it very clear as to how did the incident happen and this will be able to assist the securities obviously in following up this incident. Also, it can assist the minister and the nation at large. So as I said, a lot has already been said but this is one point of the most importance in my mind which I wanted to bring forth. Thank you very much.
Ikwe na warathokolo cause onte tin Alexander Ward one-one-six ketsari portfolio ya community safety. Ya matoma kideho kobe la kia hori ridlo waro bolela yala u ya banana le mete aso ona. Baro kono bolela nenaya kadagomu dimpa di fisha. Yeke tregimo ya bu thokwa ki a hori mobili ngere kaloka la karo onalen tse edi ranke baita pele onu yale a hori. Li humano u kirua batu obereka le jia eighteen to thirty-five. Batwa from thirty-six to sixty-five ba moma tating. Ena kiba twa experience. Ri jieru bohoni bohola oru botale bohola robo biya kothoko. I'm from Community Safety. 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 I'm from Community Safety.
I greet you all. My name is Kweena Ratakolon. I am from Zone Thirteen, Alexander, Ward One One Six. I stand here for representing community safety. I want first to point out that we need something to sustain us as we come here. So that we come with a warm feeling in our tummies. So that we can be able to actually take part comfortably. The most important thing for me about this bill is that I want to point out that most of the time. The youth ages eighteen to thirty-five are always giving priority. So what I want to say is that older people are set aside, people with experience. I know that the youth must be given an opportunity. But when it comes to this, you find that the youth doesn't even form three percent of people who are active, who are willing to work. So the bill must also give recognition to adult people, men, women, people with disabilities and all other people who are in need. So that we should be able to support this bill wholeheartedly. I thank you.
Good morning. My name is Ngarezani Emmanuel Mangwadu. I am coming from Ward Ninety Nine, Jobek, as a Ward Committee member. Okay. My name is Ngarezani Emmanuel Mangwadu. I'm coming from Ward Ninety Nine, on the portfolio of community development. I must, first of all, show my appreciation. We appreciate your presence, coming here to hear what it is that we have to say. My main concern, which I would like for you to take note of. It all boils down to safety at the end of the day. And I would therefore like to highlight the following points, which I think, yeah, first of all, is I think that every station. It should be mandatory that every station has a CCTV footage that is also monitored twenty-four hours. I think that it should be, it should be like a standard that is set. The other thing is we need to therefore put mechanism in place that are going to be able to discourage pedophiles and perverts. That are always preying on children and women in trains. We need to have, I must say that I'm happy that I saw that your chapter six was dealing a lot with safety. We need to have in these trains, women and men that are trained and are undercover. Strictly looking out for these perverts and pedophiles that are always doing these disgusting things in early trains or late hours trains. I think that is something that for me, after having used trains for so many years, it is important. The second thing is on the part of vendors and on trains. We should have an identifiable uniform that these guys are wearing day in, day out. Somehow, the government must find a way of subsidizing that particular attire. So that we are aware of who they are from a distance. Yeah, the last part is I think that in our platforms, we must invest in facial recognition equipments in forms of maybe cameras. Once again, so that the safety personnel that are in trains are alerted of those unwanted characters that might be coming into a train. Once again, I'm after the pedophiles and perverts because it's about safety at the end of the day. Thank you.
My name is Manzoni Mangodu. I'm the Vice-Chefs' Leader of the City Council of Johannesburg. I thank the Parliament that they came here today to talk about this issue. My first question is safety. First of all, I want to say that every station, every day, seven days a week, has access to the TV. So that there can be a record of all the activities that are happening at the stations. Secondly, I think that this will make pedophiles uncomfortable. To turn on the lights for women and children and also for people with disabilities. Then I want to say that there must be people who are on the roof, who are moving between the cars. To pass by safety, to be aware of it. How to identify and arrest these people and take them away from their vehicles. Then another point is that people who drive vehicles, who drive vehicles and so on at the stations, also have uniforms. So that the uniform stock can be supplied by the government. So that the people can leave the car and see that it's official people who work here. That is why this is so important for me, is the safety of the cars at the stations. And that there must be more awareness for the safety of the cars at the stations. Bye, Donkey.
Good morning. My name is Lawrence Nkasa. I am from Transnet, the freight side of things. So I'm bringing a different perspective because I'm more on the freight than passengers today. Okay, I've gone through the bill, but possibly some of the things I'm asking maybe may not have been revealed to me. My focus is, I say that the bill speaks more about the safety within the sidings, yards. Where there's lots of activities and that is highly appreciated. However, the biggest risk that has shifted for us is in the sections where. Through the socio-economic issues that we have. We have communities that are encroaching next to the rail. You've got criminal elements that are feeding on the rail, either on the cargo that we carry. Or on the very infrastructure, making it vulnerable and unsafe. I would like to know what is the bill saying in terms of the relationship and partnership with the communities? That they see the importance of rail freight in the bigger economy of the country. Rather than seeing it as a place where they can work and alleviate their problems. Because like some of us when we grew up, there was much more respect for rail. Rail was far removed from communities. It was only in the urban areas. And even then, there was respect for it. But these days, you find that when the train stop that is carrying goods. It is the whole community along that that is robbing the chain. So I'm not too sure what is the bill saying in terms of partnering with the communities? And also, you know, dealing with the socio-economic issues that are causing people to see rail as a place where. They should rather work rather than support in the bigger scheme of things. I think that's what I would like the bill to consider. Thank you.
I'm from the World Committee, which is actually a part of the Transport Committee. And there's a lot that has already been said this morning, so I'm not going to be too long. But the most important thing that I would like to mention is the overcrowding that is actually taking place within our trains. What happens is that this is almost out of control. So I would like to suggest that just in case there is an incident or maybe something does happen. It should, it would, it will definitely happen that we're going to have a lot of, a loss of life. Because of this situation not being well controlled. For an example, we've got some barricades or the pelicite. And then it is a norm that people actually break through these ones. So that they can actually be able to access the rail lines. And when that happens, we wish maybe we could have some cameras that can actually monitor the situation. That can actually make it very clear as to how did the incident happen? And this will be able to assist the securities, obviously, in following up this incident. Also, it can assist the minister and the nation at large. So as I said, a lot has already been said. But this is one point of the most importance in my mind, which I wanted to bring forth. Thank you very much.
And I would love to have the bill should be read together with the National Rail Policy. And together with the safety report from the Railway Safety Regulator. Because I think there is a crossover. The National Rail Policy under Section Six. One of the things that it addresses is about skills development, employment, entrepreneurship. So I think that with this bill, where we talk about inspectors. It's important to note that when we marry the two. For instance, Transnet School of Engineering, why are we not turning that university into a public institution? Because we're investing so much in the railways, but we're not investing in skills that will address the investment that we have made. So other than job creation, we must also in line encourage entrepreneurship. Because job creation is not sustainable, but rather entrepreneurship should be important. The independence of the Railway Safety Regulator is quite key. And so there's a line in terms of the boards. We cannot have a board, an IEOU board. We should have a board that knows something about rail. We can't have a board that does not even know the difference between a board and a nut. We can't have a difference that is not trained on corporate governance. We can't have boards that when they go in, they fire the executive. We cannot have that board. We cannot have such boards that they come in and abuse state's resources to fight the executives. We have seen that and I think we should put that to a stop as part of looking at the entire rail revival. And I also want to go back to the community. As an organization, we do our best through internships to ensure that our members take interns. So that they can, well, seventy percent of my interns are, become employed in the companies that we place them. And I encourage other businesses to ensure that in order for us to create that entrepreneurship, job creation, is not the government's job. Actually, the people themselves must take responsibility. This is our country. I have only one green passport. And to make sure that we work as a country, everybody's involvement is important. And I will pause there for a while, but I will request that we have a special sitting with the committee. Because the safety of commuters starts from the infrastructure. If the infrastructure is not safe, the passenger is not safe. The passenger is the end user. The most and critical thing to address is the infrastructure. We can go and ask Transnet Freight Rail, ask them for a thing called Track Quality Index. And that will give you an indication of where our rail infrastructure is and how eventually it. I'm finishing up. It affects the passengers. So that is key. Thank you. ask them for a, a, a thing called track quality index. And that will give you an indication of where our rail infrastructure is and how eventually it, I'm finishing up. It affects the passengers, so that is key. Thank you.
Nyani bingalela, ika malame, umasela Nklapo. Mina bengitanda jokuti ngikulume ngalumtachos vivi nyam, lapiya na ku clause seven, ku sikaba twenty-two subsection eight, lapo ku kulu nyakona, ngoku sebenzi sana, na norma isipi isikuongo. Mina ngibona ku inkinga loko u kuti ku kulu nyango kuti norma isipi isikuongo. Ngoba tina, so ikulomkaka wezo mkiprizo, sia zamaga kuti sivusalele uloliwe, uguze si guazu kuti si sebenzi kahlak, n'uksebenzi sana na manya amazwe, n'ukpegalela amazinga afanel. Waba amazwe, alukile ba sebenzisa amazinga, angafa, n'ukfana na sechainale, ba na wamazinga wabo wezo ku pepa, kanti ge footi kusechenziswa na ma, amazinga wase, wase Europe. Manje ge, mina bengi, kabanga u kuti njengo ba kupaliwe, ikulomkulu kuti lomkulu, ukondizwela, ku republikia seningizimu Afrika. U kuti ge upegalele izidla zala ekaya. Inga akwa ge, mina bengi, paga misa u kuti, wunno kuti wa ku kona is South African Rail Association, ezobandaganya, bonke laba abakona ikulomkaka ga gamchanchi nama uloliwe, footi ge umtachos vivi nyalo. Umasi ufuna, ganyen, n'ungu, n'ungu ba mkomu, yeso ku pepa ku uloliwe. N'ukuti ge si funa, imibigo, yeso ku pepa, le ekona lapo ku National Railway Policy, ku sikaba seschupa. Epegelele ukiwa ku amachupa we msebenzi, ganyen na manya amachupa akona ku uloliwe. Skatina sinninge, ngukupaulile u kuti, uyachalwa izmali ku uloliwe, kotoa inkinga ekona u kuti aguchalwa izmali egututuguseni ku amakono we msebenzi. Ganti lelo yichuba, lowa, lowa kiwa ku amachupa we msebenzi. Kubalegi le u kuti, lukakaka, nama kubalegi le u kuti abala ulayo, ku be ipodi elismeli. Ogunye footi, u fanele u kuti baba na makono o loazi le msebenzi. Ngoba ng'egesmane stachoe umuntu, onga na loazi ngalemboni galoliwe, besesicha abey lungu le podi, angazu kuti ge izinto zanchiswa ganjani, ika kuluka zi, wezo bupati. Inga akwa ge, mina getige, gu tinga ke u kuti, uhulume nde, ayubukisi ise, le yonda, u kuti ge u gulepodi ku be abantu, abanispiloni, abazi u kuti ge umkaka ugaliwe u sebenza ganjani. Ngoba skatina sinninge, si bonile u kuti, ku sechenziswa ge izinto zgahulume, n'ukutibalu enezu kuli, enezu pet. Manje, yesi yesese zintu fanele u kuti sipegelele gelezo, n'ukuti sipegelele impagachi footi, u kuti sguazu kuti sakie amachupa we msebenzi. Yionje, injwenkitrelayo, n'ukuti ku be kona u ksebenzisa, n'ukubo bonke ababamba ikaza, ku lukakaka galoliwe. U kuti na, u kuti sizo trela, u kuti sibena n'umkla nga nune committee.
Thank you very much for that first round. That was very, very valuable input. We are impressed. Can we have the second round of hands?
Seabongaraku, lustrele beni zanja.
Now I'm going to start right at the back because the people at the back normally... Okay, I see one hand the side, that one come. And I cross that side, I see that hand, yes, thumb. And the other one with a white cap, yes, three. Four, the lady behind is four, and then you are five brother. Six, seven, eight, nine, there are two there, eight, nine, ten. I'll start with you next round. You are number ten, Baba, you can go and join the seat so that we don't miss you. Let's start with the first one. So don't disappoint me, that first group did very well. They stuck to what we are here about. So don't disappoint me. Asierma, thanks.
Esanbonani, umakumalolo Alexandra Potforo yake, Public Safety. N'gyia iswa, te unjela ibe wangakona, kota mina, ginumbuso otu, i governmenti, ungalandelu akanjani intutuko, ye akaloliwa. L'entutuko lena, istimela besikoni, istimela besiran. Manje, ubuyelu emuba, uyolungiswa, izindo, izmoswe, umpagati. Isporo singanyuliwe, ziyalungiswa. Itimela ziyashiswa, ziyalungiswa. Ngaba i governmenti ge azbuza yini, oru kuti, lendo ngabe i costwa yino kuti, kutatiwe o changi. Besesopinda footi, sexo twa koli, n'iswa lapo giyofago. L'engu bo lena, yeso kthuta. Mina ngokbona wa umakumal. I governmenti ng'egge iti ku pegela pambili, enye injwenkagaluungiswa ngemuba. Ngoba gunesin zatu, esaswayo kuti, wunani, isporo, sagwa rolway, singanyula footi specially, emzilenua ma long distance. Uyaswa kuti wunani. Inklanga zo kthuta. L'endo mina, inpatisafu ku n'angana n'amchange. N'joba ngiku Public Safety. N'isomfigela ganjani, no mundo governmenti ati wye, agasibo pesel, ingentutuko galoliwa, ibe asikati governmenti kuti, uyofi wa lap. Unkagaluungiswa ngemuba kuti, indo ekoste u kuti singamukele sporo be ku yini. Inklanga zo kthuta sinenga. N'kanda u beka kala n'ile, yamategi. Inklanga namategi, inamantaga, ifuna yonke indo yayo ihambe ngendle. Uloliwa omningi, unkanyuluwa ingenga, yinklanga n'ya mategi. Uloliwa u behambagati ku ma long distance. Besikoni oksanga na na manya amaz, ngilungololiwe. Wananyuluwa ngani, ng'enge ngaya mategi. Sizo sugelale singane, setesizele, sizbizanga mapara. Ipara le sizbizanga, no mani ngamula u changi, n'usapi. Asiklo spepyati estenga, u changi. Uya pilo changi. Uya esin dongweni, n'ukuse ngamuka isporo, n'ukuse enye inklanga n'yeso kthuta, ipumelele yepambili. Ituwe ini ishisobani, ishisomundo iki belai. Enga hamba na yo ishiswa na umundo iki belai, engesobani anzusu. Bengsatela, njoba nisilda, apoke n'lungise kala emuba. U kuti lendre emushagele ganjani. Singa beki, pambilinda bazama tenda, ne u kuti sizo wenza ganjani, gespege kala impilo zabantu. Nyabon.
N'kani bingalela, ika malame, unomvula, umakumal. I quitio, my name is Nomvula Makumalo. I'm, I'm from the Public Safety Committee. I understand what has, what is being discussed here, but I have a question. The government is the one that is supposed to be developing the country. However, I see that the main issue here is that we are not addressing the elephants in the room. There is a reason why the railway lines are being damaged. There is a reason why the infrastructure is being damaged. So I think the government should go back and figure out what this reason is. We can see that the railway lines are being made, they are being fixed, they're keeping being damaged, they're being fixed. But then what is the main problem? The problem is the transport sector as a whole. They are in fights within the, the transport sector. For instance, if you can look at the taxi sector, they are very organized and they are very powerful. There is a reason why the railway lines are being damaged because we see hobo is going to damage the railway lines now, which means we can't, the railway, the trains cannot travel long distances. Who is benefiting from that? Because most of the times, it is the taxi industry that is benefiting, or other industries as well. So I think that instead of dealing with matters and coming up with tenders on how to restore the railway sector, we should go back and figure out what the problem is. The people are the ones who are damaging this, but there is something behind that. Thank you.
Good morning, Bakholu. My name is Edwin Ncdidi. I'm from Wat 69 here in Region P. Well, I believe officials sitting in front here are well aware that during COVID, our infrastructure, the railway infrastructure, was damaged by criminals. I'll be brief. Look, particularly, I'm talking about the line between Ranfontein and Johannesburg. Infrastructure was damaged, criminals were entered into stations like nobody's business, there was no security. So this will be my suggestion or my proposal to the panelists. There are a number of informal settlements, particularly on this line between Ranfontein and Johannesburg. I'll talk about Slovo Park Informal Settlement in Coronationville, next to Industrial Station. I'll talk about the Nutrient Station, there's an informal settlement there called Cathrada. How about when the system return online, you employ the very same people to safeguard the very same infrastructure? Because clearly, it's not going to help to go to Alexandra and employ somebody from there. I'm not saying people from Alexandra must not be employed. But if we need to safeguard this infrastructure, why don't we employ the very same people of Cathrada Park, the very same people of Slovo Park to guard that infrastructure? Thank you very much.
Kadi numedi sa, bakutlehi, nibitwa lakakena Edwin Ncdidi, make it wa Wat 169, Region A. Letla hopula shleba tuteli ofisirita, kahore, kanako ya asewa sana sa COVID-19. Uila bana leba chata bobo holo di poro ntarona. Kalaba kalahore, dilediya sewa, ibile dinente di ujwa. Me, hahulu hulu sana silesa etala, isporo ngapamele ya Ranfontein, let Johannesburg. Sana silesa bakagoba ne, honosuna thireleze, kapo honosuna basireleza emo. Impa, kitla, ntsama iputwa a, kama ba pelisea, sana horo sebakwa ki. Taba, yuhu ba ne, hunaleba ipehi baba nga ta, hao tsama ya mele ngi ena. Kitla, bua fe la kai, haufili industriya, nutrient, hamo le ibitwa ngoreke Cathrada. Horo, hunaleba chwaba nga ta, ba ipehilemo. Taba, enwa hape kiena, kahore, watseba, kahore, kamera horo, huetale, ke t'halu zena. Batu, baelong horo, ba hero hapo. Hu hero abona ba tuba ale, baelong horo, ke t'halu zena, dietze etze, bashedile. Kukeke hatuisa horo, hunkia ba tuba tshwana, musumun horo, ulate ba tuba zonko Alexandra, batso, batso beyalisho Cathrada. Esingu horo, kere ba tuba Alexandra, baske ba hero. Impa, taba, yuhu horo, obane ngosanki ba tuba ona Cathrada, ba ibe ona ba beyalisho mo, kapo ona ba tuba Slovo, ibe ona ba ichabelabo. Kina narosena, sitla fukuta sinyo ena, eri bo na, kialabo.
Sanbonani, ngolo Rain busisi weleka. Mina n'zokalukala ng'epalamente l'helila, n'yeso twa amacho opportunity aweku. Akona manini, ascale ng'epalamente. E palamente atikaboko, abonkulu, abalene palamente, nifage abantu, abangani ba sebenz. Comes to government, msebenz ye yabo governmenti, akuma boko ke matliniki. Akuma boko kabatali matliniki sia sala, for the whole day, ukoko, ukutuni nyao. Ufawo abantu, abangani ba wassebenza. U governmenti, agakipe bonke na boko kolo, starting from parliament, ikulomkulu pe la amachupa omsebenz. Number two, sizala, ndavenye electricity, mina n'ala air hot food. Sinengi ng'aku governmenti tagasenzelende, indesimpulsh. Ula ma cable, ngintu governmentu ya zukuti what, ne what, ndawe so, ina ma cable. Abakashe ma security, ufawo ma security azokatala ma cable. Bapatalo, bayegelukula demali le, la pe parlament, batsele male, babeke ma security bukatela ma cable akionjai. Sinala, edoxinengala ku ya ewote n'ala ku. Every week, weekend, slaklagelo ma cable. Yabo this weekend, masbu ya shoba sila, sizo buyela, tuwa kuli ni logishi, axana cable. Demali ma cable, leleke tenga ma cable, ngabi enzin, eighteen, eighteen egalai. Abakashe, abantu, abalene msebenzi meaning. Secondly, enyifunai, eighteen, nikashi, nithin kashi ama security. But maniswa ama security, n'akashe eighteen, anbanye zanga ma permanent. The rest n'ya ma, abantu, abasvenza eighteen, abaninga kona, abachola. Sitelukuti labanti, n'akashe eighteen, nibayense permanent, batule ipermanent job. Because umutos otashe ama contract, abantu, kina ba katile ba shee ganjani. Then ilai kingis otala kona, gukale, guchonje ama, 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 i poro, gukale, guchonje ama cable. Always be, agube street, eighteen, because ya nase ma training, ku be nama security azokata. Ku be limited, eh eh, pagati, eh eh eh, coaching, kuti, eh coaching, ng'enge nabantu, abanga ganan. U governmenti tagashe, agashe, because abantu, basne, abantu, abanamsebenz. Enyenge kalela, i askaliswa eighteen to thirty-five. Hunaboma ma batalala, abanga nabantu, abanga nama family, abafunu ngonjimse, imde nyao. Bashele makai, umama abesengingen, le eighteen to thirty-five, i abalimasabantu. First of all, obunyumtano wenzah ilo, n'kambi upase umetrikana twenty years. Uzoyenza ilo for seven years. Masikmele IO7, sexual na eighteen to thirty-five. And then nikasha, abantu, abangafunu sebenz steadily. U governmentu etu, utatsama three fifty, u abanikes abantu. Agapeka, ngunaboma ma abaswelela, mayasmasia ba ma pick and pay. Utshwala kona bakola ma three fifty for upusa. And le wezi n'inda wesinchi, guna mama, abomama abaswele ng'empen, abaswe lukula, abaswele in. U governmentu, uspoila abantu, abangafunu sebenza, uspoila abantu, abangafunu kusenzela nixi, seba pila ngala ma three fifty. N'kelukuti governmentu etu, asale pants, akaba ng'elenda ba ya ma three fifty, u tuwensanjani ng'oba. Intesi ibonala ma edoxin, i aswa biisa. Amatri fita, abantu ba wacholela, u xalaje. Aikinta ba wacholela, bakona ba wacholela, intesi raspat. Ava iningi labo, i hundred percent ya labantu, bakola ma three fifty, batala ngao. So nyakela la e parlamentu, n'isenzelite ngon, nanje nishige le pezulu. Nishige, nifaga abantu, n'askatela ba malema ba lokobe lo lapo, abonkula ba talaba yalo lapo, yana, nilueli ku la niluela in. Tashana abantu, abunge na abantu, sibon u kuti nputuwa yati nyegi zibera. Sibon u kuti South Africa yati nyegi zibera.
Seabong.
Good morning, my name is Loren Legale. My first point is regarding job opportunities. I am making this humble plea to the parliament to create opportunities for young people because as it is now, there are elderly people who are employed in parliament whereas we have young people who are not employed. Even in community facilities, like in clinics, you find that those who work there are elderly people who are very slow, who cannot assist us. So we are asking the government and the parliament to consider taking out this elderly people to, to put in young people. And again, where I'm staying in Wat 40, we have a problem of security theft. We are asking the government to consider hiring, employing security and stop wasting money. Because what we are experiencing in our communities, every week, there is a cable that is lost. We are therefore appealing to the authorities to use their money wisely to replace those cable. And we have noted that the security guards which are hired are not permanent. Those who guard their stations, I am making a appeal that such securities must be permanent employers, employees. Because when they have contract, once they get a better opportunity, they leave. And that is where we experience cable theft in rail. Because we must emphasize on, on safety. And lastly, this policy of employing eighteen to thirty-five, I think it disadvantage us and it disadvantage the children as well. Because most of the parents who are providing for the children are over thirty-five. And when the government says that they do not employ eighteen to thirty-five, it means that the children we are providing for are going to suffer as a result of that. And lastly, I'm asking the government to consider this three fifty because most of the people, the beneficiaries, use it for alcohol and they do not have any use for it. So I'm asking the government to... So I'm asking the government to eh reconsider eh that. And lastly, I'm appealing to the committee eh to stop fighting for positions and consider employing young people. Thank you very much.
Uh good day to all and thank you for the opportunity. Okay, that's much better. Uh so good day to all and thanks for the opportunity. Um so much has been mentioned. And um what I've noticed is that it's the same concern from everyone. So um from Johannesburg to Ranfontein, um I've been using the trains before COVID because um our station hasn't been working um just before COVID. So what I've seen is that in Kruger Storp and Ruhrabur, the SAP is quite active. So I think in all the other areas that um the law enforcement entities needs to come on board. So that it can strengthen the safety, the safety of the railway station. As I see that the the bill has mentioned safety. And then um the concern that was mentioned by one of the leaders as well was section, the there needs to be a section for the selling of goods. Because that because that causes causes also a lot of uncomfortable on the train. Where they're selling goods and it causes a lot of animosity amongst residents as well as the people who are selling. Because you're also not sure what they are selling on the trains. So there needs to be um process and procedures for a section for the selling of goods. Also, what is quite important is the development, the development around the stations. Because what we've noticed is that theft, lack of maintenance, cable theft has crippled parts of Transnet and Trasa infrastructure. So we need to ensure that the security is tougher and more visible. We also need more cleanups and restoration at the station. Now, this is a very sensitive, this is quite sensitive that I'm gonna mention now. Is that we're quite aware of suicide attempts, children that are playing on the railway stations. So we need to consider that where we do a complete closure around the railway stations to avoid to avoid such train in incidents. So we need to look at that as well. What I also would like to find out from parliament is what platform can us, can us as residents use to submit complaints and suggestions? The other one which is quite important is as well is that we need to do civic education and run programs. So that the community can understand the importance of looking after the infrastructure, which we use on a daily basis. So it's quite important that there's civic education so that the residents can understand the importance of looking after the infrastructure. So that we, when we help you, we'll have a better community, we'll have a better community and better services. So that is what comes from me and thanks for the opportunity and have a great day.
Baia danki for herei geniantaid. Akit geluise na baia pani insol wat vandageneber is. And ditlakwame ba datbaia pani insol, diezalfte is. Eh ek wonen in Ranfontein, enhit aldi spoorwag stelsel gebraik sederit vor kuwet. Um wat ik wel opgemerkeet dat in Kruger Storp in Ruhrabur is dar baia stringer weets topassingsa gehenskap is eh tenvorigheit sichtbar. And ik dink dit is iets wat ander um areas oke noriget is dat die weets topassingsa gehenskap baia meer sichtbar en aktief met wees rondom die stasis. Iets wat ik opgemerkeet is die verkoop van goederen, die handel, wandel wat gedraaie word eh in die stasis nopei treine. Dar moet beter proces en procedure since plakgestel word rondom dit. Want ons weet nie wat die mensen eigenlijk verkoopen en dit 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 lijna etwat van een frustratie. Dan wil ik ook eh klemle op baia ernstige, maar toch sensitieve sal. Dit is wel eh zelfmoord. Um en mensen wat zelfmoord pogings het eh op treinstasis en en op die spoorweer. Dit is baia ernstig en ons het ook gevallen waar kinders op die eh treinspor is speel. En dit is gevaarlijk voor helle ook. So ek wil werkelijk epleidoirig dat dar beter eh afbalkening moet wees van hieri eh infrastricteer dat mensen nie zo maklik toegang toe dit het om helle zelfseer te maak of kinders om op hieri spoorweer te speelne. Een vraag wat ik wel wil eh op er is, is dar eh platforme waar ons klachtis kan lay of waar ons vrouw kan stal en antwoordekan krijen? My laste insol is wel dat burgerlijke opleiding plaats moet vind. Ons moet platforms en werkswinkels hee waar ons mensen kan oplei en indig oor die belangrijkheid om na infrastricteer om te zien en om het in staan te hou. Dat dit ook die inwoners nie burgersje verantwoordelijkheid is om die infrastricteer te respecteer en dit in staan te hou en eh op te pass. Baia baia danki feritienvoedehaidi er.
Sanbonani, ikamaula kumalo eh from Wat seventy-five Madala Hostel. Ni wat committee member. Ta beinfunukala eh lapangoguti eh ibile umundaka ifunda ngakashle. Ngobutcholela emnyao. Kotwa ge, ebikati ngfisuku kubuza ngoba ne kona njenga bantu bestimelu guti. Ngabe le bilile yenza, guti zonke itimela sfane in, manke zonke itimela ngisho. Imetro rail ne haltrain. Ngoba njenga manje, buwea ngati, gune metro rail ekandelo abatile, ne haltrain ekandelo abatile. Eh umbuzo amogotkala kotwa foto wespi ilebe gu guti. La gu bild, umawa wazopega gu gu chapter ten, lapak page ten eh section two subs eh chapter ten subsection two B. Eh ekromanga composition of report. Lapak tuage guzo ketwa, abanta bangi ile gu nine. Gu laboba, guzo gukoana ma civil eh, guzo gukoana civil society eh, ene experience knowledge. Ngabe agukwen lazo tinganga kuwa, mtsambe eh some educational qualifications. I were really trying to say sizo tata bantu, because of the knowledge, ene experience ekpele. Singen na i profie educational eh background ya labo bantu. That's number one. Number two, guni mtsambe bile ngafanele kshinge eh ife page ilande la, lapagu chapter eleven subsection one. Eh gu appointment of board members. Eh la eti kona uminista geofanele, akipinotis using eh gazet eh nama newspapers out too. I think eh bilifale amende lapu guti eh, nama newspaper out too at least, agube nearly one level ne kula. Eh ngoba uma ngabe utuka njene njene, geoso gube ila wamtsavu me otshwolu guti majority abantu be tabaguazu wa fund. En lapu uma ngabukuma guzi, nama newspaper out too ne gazet. Abanya be tu, abaguazu gushtwala leze zindo. Kunganja ane bilibe sia eta gu ti eh, inlela yokwenza in notice. Agube i gazet, ama newspaper, ama radio advert, nama nama TV advert. As well as i i website ya yo it department, ngoba ime nishinanga. Guze onkumunde zo guazu uma ngabe se kuvulue for ama appointment. And then lapaya gu subsection four, ukutigema ngabe se kishi we notice much. Eh that's where abanta ba out it, bezo advertiser kona gu, gu website eh department. Agube kona ge, iklambe seshine fa anale. After se be advertised, yu buwa out it, gu website. Si buu ye sizo bonugutinlambe tinanjengomparat eh siyabavuma in labo bantu. Sngale telo abanta baso beko, gube uminista pele njenga bata ndawaki. Masube koki wesesabonile, sesi ya buu asetano ay, kasi amazi siyavuma lo, lo ay, ngayega simetembe, agamele trele. Kunga bukutma ngabe se ba appointment eh, ba fele lapu se kpele njalo, asagoazu komenda ngabo.
I agree to all. My name is Daki Kumalo, I am from Wat seventy-five. Um I have a few comments that I would like to make. I did not read the entire bill because I only received it outside. I have a question with regards to the bill. Um my main question is, will the trains that we are talking about today be equal in terms of the services? Here I'm referring to the Haltrain versus the Metro Rail. Will the services be the same? Uh also with section ten subsection two B eh in relation to the composition of the board. Uh it says there's no more than nine members uh should be selected, including the civil society with experience and knowledge. Now, I would like to know about education qualifications, will those be included? Will those people only have knowledge, uh will there be no proof of their education qualifications? Also, with regards to chapter eleven subsection one, uh when it comes to the appointment of the board. Um it says that this, they will be, there will be a notification in the gazet, which which will be two and also two newspapers. I would like that to include uh one vernacular newspaper or a lan, a newspaper that has, that is written in a vernacular language. Because um they might be using those which our people cannot understand. Uh people need to have access to information. Also, I think that we should add more um more resources that can be used to publicize these board members. Which can be notices or adverts in the, in the radios as well as the television, uh the newspapers yes, as well as the websites of the, of the board, pardon me, of the departments. Um so also with regards to subsection four, it says that there will be thirty people selected and they will be uh publicized in the website. I think that after those people have been publicized, they should let the public have a voice. The minister should not be the only person appointing them. But the public should be given an opportunity to say whether they would like this person to be part of the board or not. Thank you.
Sanbonani, oh nakishut. Alright, thank you, thank you. Eh sanbonani, my name is Elaine, my surname is Cook. I'm in Wat thirty-three under councilama Zivogo. Eh my problem is firstly, we did not go through the bill. In future, we request that we should be given the bill in advance. Gu gu ti sizo was, gu ti si funde and we know what we can report on. And secondly, mi nanzokala ngati as as world committee members. I just want to know, how do you come as a parliament, come to a bill that a a world committee member should be paid out of pocket a thousand rand as opposed to the councillor that you work with? And we all told that this is not a permanent job, it's just for five years, as much as the councillors are there. That should be changed because the the president himself says his living wage is at least three point five. But that doesn't eh come to the eh world committee members. Coming to the railway stations, I think we should start using, stop using the polycite. Because people use polycite for different reasons, for building and doing such things. Maybe we should start using the electric fencing so that they will be unable to access the, the, the railway station. Secondly, people that live around irrespective of its thugs or what. People live around the railway stations and they are unemployed. And they know that the only thing they can do is to get those, they should, those rails to go and sell them. So they use them for, to, to satisfy their needs. If the government eh gives us enough employment, then such things won't be happening. And people should be move away from the regions, railway stations. And then I come to the effect of the patrolers. Eh when we started, I've got over twenty-two years doing patrolling. Eh Feros Quachalia had a eh eh a mission with patrolers. We've been doing such thing, eh patrolers are not eh eh recognized. And then when eh job opportunities come out, they will also, the very same officials in the community of safety and such things will take their children, their families and give those children eh the type of job they want. They should consider us as patrolers. And as, as the parliament has old people, we've been here, but we'll tell you so kukila wenosuga. And we've got more information and eh to the railway stations, if patrolers are taken, that, that was started before. That they should do the guarding of the stations. It would be much better and because every area has got patrolers. And if they are given an opportunity and trained, I, I think they would do a better job. Because I've noticed that even community is scared of patrolers more than the police. And then I come to, the, the train should have a limited amount of people that should board on. And there should be eh in eh punishment if they found them hanging on the trains and all that. It should be done to, to eh, I think that when, after the, the train is full, no more access to the train should be allowed. The, I won't speak of the stipend of three fifty, i- i- it's a disaster. I think the three fifty should be given to the elderly rather, because they take care of these children. What we see with the three fifty is they go to the liquor store, that's all they do. So we, we think if the elderly, that three fifty should be given to the pensioners. It will work much better than the children, thank you.
Eh bitramina, mi na Elaine Cook, nu ma awad thirty-three. Eh anislaya ngi na wmbisi lo wa ni, yikuwa eh nu kume sisi sliu konfika la wa. Shkombe shaminu, yiku, mi ambami nika na wmbisi, kungasifikasi kuwa kona, etakota kumanka rewu enero, kota ku xlaya kashle. Kulukuitala, ebay utisini, kota ku, kota ku chela, ma bonelia ina, la ma 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 ingakota ku ma tsa melan si, matu sakashla nga tapuna sunene. So eh kunamakalia tu wat committee members, wanikua ku ma alokringana a thousand rand. Eh ay wonukore, malile, gube kunamcouncillor wa, na 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 president wa ina, ramaposa, uburnisaku. Eh mo oluweli haan, sekfunu kuwa three thousand five hundred. Kombe na yonamina nguta ya leo. So lokunata wa atmakataleti eh tifamilakwesi ngatelasone la, imakak tereswaka ku bielata i kutresapalycite. Kombe la ichinja makatpolycite yiku, titiraslo soktala ngofinga rubelita ntsena, bangwaanba akati indro etoona. So lokwatu wa atpolycite dibeliti na, ba titsayama, ba titeka bayabaya akati indro. Kombe la kutreswa fence yo hamba na na tpolycite, le inga rekinantiro, utala ngofukutla ku bielata ntiro yon. Enen, makayonwa yanlila ba kui, tisa amachunka wena, yiku oni wa kasporo. Nashto kura etiko ndraye nara Africa zonga ayana mintiro. Manboktaala kume ba aikela batshamaktuwa nasporo. Bayetela batse metinsimita sporo, ba ba karisa, ba xavisa, yikuwa abana mala, abana mintiro. So watiresa malile, ya sutemo ka sporo, wakota kutendela mali ya wona, batakota ku xavasla be koswa kutomi. Kombe la makayamintiro iran, sio amachwena yon, kupapa yata shpicoli, shaksumwa ka sporo. Enen, inaxonwa yanban, mafanele ba susiwa, ba, ba akirwa, kule nyana nasporo, kutshamachle ka sporo, afslayise kanyi. Mi ina, antera ka patrol, kume kurinza, kurekana twenty-two years. Nisitiwa kashle ntiro, lo wa kurinza eh mara, lokwintiro yo umelele ya burinza, so akpana patrol. Ay tekeru ntsokwen, ay nekwi mintiro de wa, mintirole, ya etela inikwe wa, laba, mangarekna tokoto wa ntiro, lo wa patrola kume kurinza sporo. Eh ina ingananta koto sunene, ilaba na kutrainiwa kume bulete, laba kuna tapuna sunene, ku ntiro lo, kuyendwa kashle, ku isuboni ku. Ba ay, kiwacha va ngofinga, ina ban, ba patrola ku klama poris. Hini kenio na mintiro le wa ni ina, hitatisa na i training, siso sa ina sanga anta kutlela. Makayonwa etelela, imakata three fifty, alatavala ngofit three fifty, i biengof makata three fifty. Faninyu kaba kukwa, nava xlayisa committee, ingani kuba, ban, sio, yikuwa anta ka three fifty, batutimala bzale, akas.
Eh du melan? Eh ke frankumshwede more hot sixteen, pot eh pot
Ki Frank Mutwinning, ward sixteen, port, portfolio ya gakiya transport. Kupoyaka ya pele kina normlewe kavari la marikuparki su kisa ape ukwala. Bo hulu hulu sekita skopa, Kore, Prasa, itai by all means to recognize a community police forums. Ba tu ba ba sebe tase ba tu amdino, riba ba tu ba holo ba tu ambusiu, ba kapab, ba dudi ba ba isadi teshine. Eh nguha ape kitake kupa, Kore, Prasa, ibaneli relationship with community selling how many teshine, so that ba honora ba sebe tase nela boona. Number three. Ki negita kupa Prasa litexi industry, ba ba nelo common understanding. In a sense, how about a little bit trend delays, ba honora balaiseli, texti interest so that in the second ferry the passengers to their destinations. Because now these trend delays, kids ona takosandi vandalism sometimes. Because remember motu tati lo ya msebiti, enen train I am. And then how na communication, you sitting in the train and then lady, wa ziba musomahuan za kuswe rego, pitigi wa na ba, ba tomatis. So kiwa na yonwene ki kupa hiyo, yonwena yautena, ekikwalanga yon, kiya oku negita kupa Prasa, ba keba chakile di kulu tarona, ba, ba bonse, ba nabago na the danger of staff riding. Thank you.
I greet you. My name is Frank Mutwinning from ward sixteen, transport portfolio committee. I've got few things that I want to ask from Prasa. The first one is that Prasa must recognize policing forum because this policing forums are mostly adult people who work very hard. They wake up in the morning as an example and ensure that the people, the, in the communities are able to go to the train stations in safety when they have to wake up and go to those areas very early in the morning. We also need the commitment from Prasa when it comes to communication. The communication must be open and it must be improved because sometimes there are train delays and when the trains are delays, are delayed, we need people to be helped. Maybe taxis should ferry people from certain station to, to other station to ensure that they are able to go to work on time. I thank you. I'm sorry, I left the last one about staff riding. There is a, Prasa should actually use their, their, their cars and whatever means they have in order to, to go and visit children in schools to teach them about the dangers of staff riding because it's a dangerous activity and children needs to be aware, made aware that they should conduct themselves safely.
Eh du melan, hude. Libitola kaki chinet Mufukem from ward thirty-five. Sector yaka is development planning. My concern more is security and infrastructure, that's point number two. And then point number three, it's, it's mainly based on community howo. Hakifika mo yapele the point I'm, I want to emphasize howulu and is a concern howulu monagore. Kiya u kwa kap, eh, eh, about the station, that the security had to be on the station. Station is there, security more stationing. This railway, Prasa, had renitwa stationing, imuva to the next station, just an each fella from Tanzania to Kwezi. There's an open space there. Community safety, our community imoka imo because hunali mo, before we used to have the under bridges, now we don't have them anymore. And harinali, any security fence or anything that's the, eh, eh, community howu na re iskalo jumpa that railway. So howulu concernaka is mainly based mobile na husemba yanshulu. They have to jump more the more before Kwezi and Tanzania, hunali mo ba jumpa nte, ba jumpa on the railway. And remember, the training is such a bit, that, 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 that in Twena, those wires sense a diliengama fati, safety our community, ba nababa jumpa mbatla kamo, there's no, my main concern is why, because hale, hale di training dilite, why ba say it's a security fence on the border so that oskavali intruder, moskanu champion, those underway bridges must, eh, eh, must work, that's where infrastructure yarunali environment is in right today. That's the concern I have. And then again, most, more, more community, it toladi to putzenga tatachona, that is why kiya uba tla security fence, di to putzenga tatachona, more, more, na that open space mobile yensin intruder ba jumpa moti. And another thing, what I, I, I equa long emphasize howulu kore, la refeyla hat, alina Prasa hayna design si, hayna di porti zebonza ure, more likasi fiti mo. And a design si zaten, li di port zaten, adilitendigo station infel, but on the, eh, hayza may station ifela, edlo pasa ki mo, that's my main concern on the open spaces. And another thing, ne kiko pa ape, ore wele, ti kolong arekenemba nembahu na uba, ne kibona ba sebe disan di, 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 facilities zengata, ene kibona ba tama ya modi zilenseu, zeho tolangu re ba hona ure ba etse li di drugsimo. So re preventen, tso tse zengata, safety ya batle ya mo, ene ko pariremba, tuare employ emba tu ba sebe. Enen twaya hui, ufaleka eighty-eight thirty-five, yari limata howu. As I am in the age of fifty-five, look at me, do you think I, I never kiha nosabeet just because you limited us to thirty-five, which means eh, eh, kiyo nantwe zari, ribe lili, lintotzenga tatachessa yamun pakatinga hoon. And another thing, the, the, the thing a thousand rand, I'm also a world committee, I'm not happy about it. I'm using airtime yaka, I'm using my smartphone, I'm using my data, really, really recuperali from concern on that. Thank you so much.
Good day. My name is Jeanette Mufukem and I come from ward eighty-five and I represent development and care. I have three issues that I want to address. The first one, it's concerning the secu- the security of the community. And also, I also want to in, eh, address the infrastructure and the communities of home. The more emphasis here, it's about the short, the, 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 the railways that between in Tanzania and Kwezi. There's a lot of open space there. Before, we used to have bridges, but now there's no more bridges and there's no more fences. Now, the community, they need to cross, they cross and especially this affects our children. This open space is in Tanzania and Kwezi. There's, there's wires, as we all know that we have wires all over as they are cut. Before this, trains, we had, trains have been here for long times. Why don't we have fences? Why our infrastructure are failing us? So the other issue is that we have so many corpses, we found so many corpses. The emphasis here is that Prasa fails us. There are no boards or signs that shows us not to walk there. Let us care for our children who mainly use these facilities and sometimes they use them to do drugs there because of they are neglected. The other thing is this thirty-five years cut off. Look at me, I'm fifty-five years old. Do you think that I cannot work? I can really work. So but this thing, it's one thing that causes problems in the community. And also, the last thing is that I'm also a ward com- eh, 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 ward councillor who ends the thousand rand. This thing of thousand rand is not okay. I'm using my airtime, I'm also using my data. So how am I supposed to sustain myself? Thank you.
Eh, good morning. My name is Edward Skippers, ekas van Revelliha, ward sixty-eight. Danke für die Gelegenheit, dass du es mit ihr leute pratt, because it's very important, dass uns sprach von der Railway Safety. Railway Safety, uns het de concrete palace. Wat gebeert, problem is, wat uns het is dat, government give contractors the work om te doen and the contractors complete in the job, ne job wordt net so gelost. En niemand van government doen op voor werk met die contractors waar die werken doen niet. Zo ons het een groot probleem is op plekken waar onze tunnel het en dan ons ook een brug. Maar waar die schoolen is, waar die kinders met oor gaan school toe, waar die school die naast andere kant is, is het hoop en het is gevaarlijk voor de mensen. Baja mensen het al dood van gaan op die plek waddelen, oor gaan het zo. Mijn ander ding is, ik ken die praat, weten ons praat van die safety van die trainer, praat ons van aparte trainer of praat ons van die nieuwe trainer wat, wat nou hi so gaan kom. Van ons kennen het praat van ei trainer is ons uitgevat geweest om op ei trainer te rij en zien hoe werkt die safety van ei trainer. Maar aanvuldje kennen ons die praat van die nieuwe trainer, maar het belangrijkste is, ik het een pizza hi so waar onze railway lijn het, waar ons probeer altijd met Prasa praat en say van die, die bomen wat helle met pron city parks kom en maak die parks schoon, snij die bomen, maar dan onze andere plek is, je ken eens die railway lijn zien de wijde bomen lang is. Dat is, dat is krom activities wat plek vat aan ei, aan ei plekken da so. Zo ons graag government moet inkijken en het en voor ons help met dit. Because that is a great problem for the safety of our childrens, dan ook die security companies. En wil graag vraag dat government moet in het inkijken is dat, jullie ken werk met die emissie van public safety because why? Ons het baya unemployed youth in onze community. En als government has, ons moet de safe gemeenschap het, dan moet government die emissie so vers gebreek, laat ons meer patrolers krien in onze gemeenschap wat niegebat, wat volunteer, ons het daar, ik het gevolunteer. Ik denk mijn vooroverzet ook gevolunteer. Maar nou is het gelegenheid wat government moet beginnen zien om te invest in de CPF. Hoe meer CPF daar is, hoe les activities gaan na is wat corrupts, wat crime content. Zo dat zal ons baya help, als ons dit kan doen in onze gemeenschap. Zelfs moet onze safety op die trainer, kom ons gebreek, die mensen waar die vendors is op die, op die, op die staas is. Employ helle, laat helle oor kom na die CPF toe because why? Nozele net vendorsi, maar nozele ook die oor en voor de government en voor de community. Laat ons allemaal samenwerken, dan gaan ons zien, ons gaan een betere gemeenschap het, ons gaan een betere kant rijt. Because als ons allemaal nie gaan samenwerken, dan gaan ons nooit succeed wat ons wil help niet. Dan de ander ding wat ik wil oor, oorbringen aan jullie is dat ook, the safety is the, the kerker wat jullie nie gebreek, jullie maak nie gebreek, montlik, wet die maak jullie gebreek of maak jullie nie gebreek. Because as the, that is the main, that is the main place where ons moet begin, is the kerker wat met intep hi so and government and, where government moet samen telle werken because helle is the leaders van die gemeenschap. So hoe gaan helle die boskap oordre, na die gemeenschap helle proberen, laat mos best om te help hi so met die, met die gemeenschap, om die dinge rechte krijg, the safety, the crime to prevent, maar government is die daar om samen telle te werken. Zo ver, vermodig is het ons gelegenheid is dat, government moet ons allemaal samenwerken en zelfs die hotcom met die ook. En so danki voor die, voor die deze raarwa da is, maar ons vraag ook kan government daar inkijk, om het net bekita verbeter, because sussel geset is voor jenen, dat vat baya, ons het eentelijk ons benefit eentelijk in die, in die deze raat heti, because the deze raat gaan meer voor transport, because ons met uitrij na plekken toe, ons is in ward sixty-eight in Revelli in, namet ons uitrij peni wel toe, is ook transport op en af. Zo ons vraag graag voor government, als ze blijf luisteren aan ze, zo ze vraagt, en ook de ander ding is, ward sixty-eight, ons het jessie duati, jessie to shake off, so ze baya mensen wa da it kom. Danki.
Baja danki.
Good afternoon. My name is Edward Skippers. I am a ward councillor from ward sixty-eight. One of the main concerns that I have is government awarding tenders and contracts to contractors who don't complete the jobs. They do half a job and nothing ever gets done. So a, a, a big concern in our community is safety for children traveling to a school. We, we do have a tunnel and a bridge, but the route the children take to school is across an open piece of, of land and, and it's really dangerous for them. So we need government to step in and address these issues so that we can have safe routes for our children to reach the, the school. Then we also have issues with the safety of the trains. Now, I'm not sure whether it's the new trains or the old trains that we are talking about here with this bill. I can't, I can't say. But also, this, this leads to issues with infrastructure as well, where Prasa has been asked to step in and maintain the trees along the railways, even city parks, so to come in and, and trim the trees, but nothing is ever done. I really urge government to step in and address these matters to get the entities to act accordingly and maintain these railways. Security companies need to also be addressed. We need more activity there. We need the, eh, emissie of public safety to reach out and maybe assist in getting the unemployed people in our area to get involved so that we can build trust in the community and that we need to invest in a CPF so that the community knows that the members are involved and we can trust each other. And I'm pretty sure that this will definitely alleviate the, the levels of crime we are experiencing. My suggestion would actually be to get the vendors at the train stations involved, to be the eyes and ears of the community. And we, we, as communities and government need to work hand in hand to make this happen, to ensure the safety of all our citizens. We also urge community or the, the government to reach out and work with churches as they are the mouthpieces who reach out to the community and aid communication. I would like to thank you for, for being here today. However, I do want to bring it to your attention that the thousand rand we get per month is not enough as ward councillors. Most of this money is actually, or is used for transport costs to attend meetings such as this. So could you please listen to our pleading and address it as such? Thank you.
Marakalma. Inamashipsho mabel. Ekas present one question miss movement. That mean, ekas hi so many mandats ban ali koysons, dwart erstes Africa. Me position is i, om koysan branch te stig dwart die land. Die reden ekhi is, ekas hi so as a diis kneg van me gemeenschap. Ekas eentlik gegri, as hi die parliament hat ons feel. Ninety fifty-five, ek will clear mark, anil ANC led government clear mark. Ninety fifty-five, me the freedom charter, me people's convention, was dit a trap? The people shall govern. But this is hi die ANC regering wat gama, etos mut gloe, that ons wat mensen is, ons al regier. Elk a ya, elk a vire ya, dakana ons dakana dottons per ANC. Maar ANC government, oni dakhi etos gefeel. As je, je na die in persasje kijk, ban is poole weg, sit up kets is poole weg, is oor hondekintvijftig jaar op. Wa so funny is, ba kowut kom, tu maak me komri, komut pocek, fikeye. Tuwa komri, pocek tuwa te ti jelle security weg, ban ali stasis af. Met wie het die de, de, tergezel? Het niks tergeplas, nee, me security tergeplas het. Dat was level five. Wa bas ali police, wat gepetroolend? Wa bas ali verma? De bijo net die ANC had geplann, laat die trainer nie moet rein. Ala die ANC government het het oop gesreed, at die, die arme mensen moet nog se sikel. Vanwa as hi moet ding, wie het geweet, toonteg mail daarvan, sala kevel van die spoorweg is. Ons het nie dom. Ons hi precies, wat ANC langta gebesleid, dat helle gaan trainer gaan invoer, en die trainer was te groot voor die brug. Nou ritla sorge maak, helle vat ons trainer weg. Benach sikel ons die arme mensen sikel. Want dag zekken ons die arme mensen zekken van, van land. Met transport ons het, en misschien van ons het transtrainer gebreek van dag. Gebreek ons die bieteren niet. Ik bekreeg, want het is net die soetje mensen, helaas de mensen moeten doen. Het is soetje, het is net die soetje mensen. Van naledie, wat geprieten van de ANC niet. Bijde van onze mensen, bijde van de westren. Dat bij ANC komri zie je in de westren, wat geprieten voor hier ANC. Want dag de ANC to westren, van rampuntin, de mensen van rampuntin gepegeerd. Oos nu raak trainer in de rampuntin in, oos nu raak trainer in westbrein in. Want dan gaan onze trainer rijden van lu, westbrein, want dan gaan onze trainer rijden van rampuntin. Want dan gaan onze trainer rijden van die oosrand, dat is die trainer wat op umelke gerenen. Oos nu raak, als er blij. Dit is mijn point hoy. Oos nu raak die trainer soho, soho als moeders terug. Want onze gemacht twintig twintig, dat toch niks gebeurde niet. Ik vraag die regering als er blij toch. Ik ben security say, breng je terug die security, als er blij. Alle is het van onze gemeenschap wat ons geeft precies wie is, dit is onze kinders wat crime doen. Laat helle, die de patrole waarde is, de patrole is stipend zal gerenen. Want want ons het bij van het rand, als er blij. Oos nu raak helle, helle. Oos wil ik om bekrijgen niet, because ons ken bekrijgen als ons wil. Ons gaat wapens opneem. Help ons als er blij, dat ons, onze kinders moeten rechtkrak. Laat ons moet werken creen op die alle stations. Pan katreden af, pan petorie af, pan rampuntin af. Because daar waar de co-kommune is, nodig is safety. Als mijn safety breng terug op die trainer, want onze mensen worden gebeloven. Breng je als er blij toch, die train terug, zo goed moontelijk. Dat ons trainer oor is moeten komen rijden. Dank je.
Thank you very much for that second round. Just before we get the interpretation, we are going to get the second group of people. So while you are coming forward, you will step forward and do the interpretation. Can I have hands? Those who would like to have a bite? I had promised to start here by you. So please come, one, number two. Number three. Number four, the lady. Number four, gender sensitive. Number five. Number six. Number seven, number eight, I saw two hands at the back. Number nine, number ten. Yes, we can continue with that interpretation while these ones are taking their seats.
Thank you, Mr. Chairperson. My name is Jo Mabel. I am a Koeisand chieftain and I represent my people here today. I feel that I'm very aggrieved. Parliament has failed us. At the Freedom Charter, we were told that people, the people shall govern. And when the ANC came into power, we thought that we would govern. Yet we feel that we have been failed. Our railways are over a hundred and fifty years old and not much has been done to really improve it. I would really like to implore government to assist us and help us to govern. Make it accessible for us to get from the westrend to the eastrend and not just focus on the people in the Soweto and surrounding areas. We need more than just stipends to help us to get access to the railways and also get our children involved and have safety around our railways. Thank you so much.
Sanbonani. Ik am ala me ngutiksin wa waltu disbon. Ngeboya kuwa triple one. Thank you. Ngeboya kuwa emi train branch kuwa triple one. As I've said, ngutiksin wa waltu disbon. Uma ngemela si bon wa wakulu ukuti nisibiza, ipodfollow yami ngemewa transport. Kuwa word comment. Njengoba si melasitlanga en namtsange, we thank you for that. But the thing that I want to ask is that if you need hacha, like security, ye nene i begay because wakulu wakulu esiktolayo, what you get ukuti. Kuwa shwa sambehe, ye kuwa is a South African, but then abasebenzi kuwa ama foreigners. Do you think ukuti as a, as a South African, we're going to stop corruption now? Because these people, they have all the information when they are working there. Also, is safety anything else I own now? Because in Ghana today, the shaya in the bodies para paras, kibera ama te, ama itrain. En ngandele ngakemche twen. Si zo is topa ganja nindele ukuti, maybe abantu ba tien seba ama tigi. Because what I know, itrain, ngati ibana ma offices during the day, in the evening, ukuti ngabo eighty, akseko abantu ba buya msebenzin, seba kibera is para para, maybe xeni upatare, badan tamba ama agapatare. Is safe here logo, si zo enza ganja. Si boni de u government, ilusi de wakulu as a South African go, go korona. Because people are still everything. Also, njenga ma board members, njengoba nifesi for Prasa. Ngabe seni kreti de any corruption ye nu yokpatare, i boogo enina. So because you lost a lot of money in the patare i boogo. I think to me also si laskona kona, ngufile ngati abandabas lidayo, abahambi en telene right. Singa gashinchi tines ama litas, do you think ukuti si zo bakona, abandebezen ba wetuna, ngia bon?
Manbulis. Baslan ngapambi, okay.
Thank you very much. My name is Mr. Tuli from Ward eleven. Thank you very much for the committee to call us to this meeting today. I am one of the Ward committee members, Transport Committee. Now, I want to ask this question. When you employ people, what are the requirements? When I'm asking this question because I'm confused. Because most of the time you find that the contractor will be South African. But they will employ foreign people, foreigners. Now, I think that we are not going to get rid of corruption because these people have access to information when they are given such opportunities. And another issue I want to raise is regarding safety in the, in the railway. Because as we have heard from other speakers, that young people do not conduct themselves safely in the, in the trains. And now I want to know what is the transport doing to mitigate against this? And I also want to know what do they think that people will buy ticket? How will people buy ticket if they do not consider these safety measures? The government has lost out during the COVID. And what I want to know from you as board members is, or transport members is that whether you are through paying the ghost workers? Because we've heard that there's a lot of corruption with regards to ghost workers in the, in the rail system. That is what I want to know. We must make sure that we mitigate against these challenges and, and corruption. Because if we do not do that, we as leaders, it means we are losing a generation of leaders. So please let us be considerate on those aspects. Thank you very much.
Oh, manbulis. Baslan ngapambi, bulis enen fiong. Ukutroga tuuma. Is sektayam development and planning. Dis dianda richinchi. A orange farm, a what for? So, di funa kaka teta ngobololiwe in terms of wika lelo singa lenza singa baslan. Bakus strength ino indaba your security. I proposal endi bona i ukuti. Dingai vesan ngapambi in terms of egu kwa queenle, bililena. Ukuti apa ima training. Kune nchoba nchoba sa bandu. Abahamba ngazo. Bogwe nzeela. Abas patanga. For instance, daal nepa nginfa romen, ye si training. E training ukona inpond. Esinzo wa ngabandu. Abasebenza en abangasi, badebezen konzulie. Benzin konzo e training. Kuwa e kona abantu abachaya yo, e, e training. Abane ndawachi bona apa, inda wete, ekohusho ganye, e lok, lok chaye. Kuwa e kona abandaba kona e training. Ogung abantu bona, abakolelo kinkoloze sin to like, abakenza. Kuwa e kona abantu e training, ogung abandaba assist kibin, aban gozu uti. Kuwa e kona abantu njenya, abane, abafuni peace of mind, aban ngafuni msi. So, lonto le itige, if you see phone a manager that environment. Ma kuwa e kona abantu apabatashwaya, abandaba cha. Abazo kape shelo, ubu social work. Adibna ma office akona istisne stishi u railway line. Gula ma office, ogung ngabinama office injie, ogutengsa ama tigi. Ma kuwa e kona abandabazuti, kabi dibene nengage ti la, guglimala. Kuwa e kona inda apa e kona ukuti, ukona maparinedits. Abandaba cha, abazo kazo attenda langos. Biyaliwa esstimeli, e training, kololiwe, bafunu attenda lobo bandula. But while the training eke ime, ngendele fane legli, kawenzekinguus, itati itasha. It ma kuwa e kona umdo ozogwazi, ukwalakhalum tunawo, uti amphefisit. So sitting abandaba jam, sitting abandaba fana, nama social work, abazo bakona, abesa gula ma kona pe stishi, ino odha ukuti, kawuka kona abandabasugume zegile. Guba gubakonu sugumeza na kulu, entwin esstimeli, epakuma train. Ogwenzo ukuti uzif, ukuti no, awpateganga kaku ulle. Funa kona pe stishi, uifumane that attendance ukuti. Ma u, ma, 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 kuchu ukuti ma wenzwe in to i, bagulu ngise, before we ufige msi noak. Bagu opelendo ukuti, bag assist in terms of ino. Kuwa e kona nizi in to lallega yo, apa e training. Bagu benen lele ukuti, the next stish, uyagwazo kfoona, gommyo stish ka wu reporte apa ukuti. In to yakifumane again ngapambi lugu stish, ayukuti glallegi zinto. Oguti bas ngabana lobo, abandu abo, abasala kwezi stishlis. Abazo trainua for lomisere nzein njenga le, njengezit security to as ya funeka. But in last, last day kona abandasa ziti ukuti, abandabazo attenda, abandabenzaga i problem, abas tolayo esstimeli. Because now and then esstimeli, you have totally problems. So, i, i suka pinda geni, i ngai proposal ukuti. But the situation that we to go to, uyapoma esstimeli. Upoma amtsaim esstimela sfige lady, you don't get information. Ukuti, uzogwenza ganja, ukuti ukonsalt, ukuti ma, ma ube safety nzele. It lonto, funa kona pe stishi, gula apa bandu besia ngobunin se kona. Kuwa e kona inda ukuti, is the security, es kona glonda le, es stishi ne la. Zigazo ukapabandu, at least you wa fagimisi. Guba like a straightforward stishi. Ime si tekelele. Oguzi ufige ekaya, ubu fisit, e training sfige lady. Funa eke uambeweta, otani yamba, yamba ne suga. But we oni beka prat, we msi, guba ngoloka kuu. So sitge tina ge, that strengthening your security, ma e be kona, ogwenzo ukuti. Bagwazo assiste kaba, uksebenzi sanage nonotiksi. Guba, kwezi stishi ne, nins, apogu like a straightforward.
Mas bulay, layende.
Oh, that's.
Mas bulay.
Oh, serba na was.
I greet you all. My name is Godfrey Duma. I am from the development and planning sector in Orange Farm, Ward Four. I am here to sort of matters concerning the railway, which is really being, which there is a great impact in our railway safety in our community sense. I have some proposals to deal with this matter. We should understand that there are different people who use trains and they behave differently. For instance, we have people who conduct church services in the train, who could be employed and unemployed people. We have smokers and non-smokers. We have people believing cultural or African religions in the trains. We have criminals and we also have those who just want a peace of mind. So the government should manage this by employing the youth who can be trained to work as social workers. There are officers at the train stations and those officers should not only be used to sell tickets, but they can be used for other services such as paramedics. Because people do get injured, there are fights in the trains as well. So if a person is injured, they can get first aid at the station. There are, there's also a need for social workers I've mentioned at, at the train station. So if people do not feel well mentally and they need some mental assistance because of whatever that could have happened in the train, they can go there and be, and get that immediate assistance. Also, things do go missing in the trains. So if there can be a place for people to report at the next station that they've lost something, that could really be of great assistance to the public. Because you do need services provided for, for commuters or trains. Also, with regard to security, we need more assistance in terms of security because sometimes trains do delay and people arrive the stations late. And if they are housed, the houses that they can go past when they are going home would be better. So we need really to get much assistance in terms of security. We also need to work with the taxi industry. Thank you.
Du melambarais. Le katabeni utre filitz. Ki du milen steven tamara, kotoa ko, what it one? Ki emisie lepa para, public safety mo, what committee ya, what it one, richin i? Karuna lolio ekori du lang, rebato fela, remo, remo, remo fela, remo fela, remo fela. Ma refela ona letso alonya, na fela enka ebeyan, ele maleba mo, motabenya ya di train. Pansi reliability di toto. Se di zuang, kotoa kokai, koya kokai, dibolo kese gile, me yano, kadi zoto dibolo kese gile kaba kala kore. Reberegisha di zela. Reberegola lela le, se chabasaro, se chabasaro smokotin, katabaya di turna zeri senting, kona yano. Ebeta bayadide le, se dile nting, katabaya kore ngao satolo kona le train. Yano, kore traine yonukwalakomoraf. Arre ukua rapelle se chaba, arre boele kose mora, koro ukwalise chaba, se chaba. Di turna zanu, di tlo kwalati, so mojo, ritlo kaba reka se chaba mojo, li di traina. Ki inselika sebiya mopelle karuna, kore ritre ukopana le kore, di sebele to zaro na, di tami sana zentele loona. Ra koba reka jangle loona, ro na re boele mora. Ro ukwalikomini ti kore, barrefe katsila e maleba, kwa koba reka lebonemo, di chabeyan. Kona le, di lozeti lo kore, kona yano, system di chenchili. Arre kobe riks electronic system eelingting, kajano, yana karo karo yano, system eleya kha le, eleya high side reka. Reo e inka i channeli, security for pabala seko, ya se chaba. Hakibaka pabala seko, se chabakore kia, kareza, babo tli, babaeling, mojarakatena, le baba ngotling, katena. Reo e du la fatse lebona, barrefe min lawa ya bona, le unareba fema ekutlo, abona, kore ra koba reka jang, li tirsano mojo lebona monakonieta. Reo e bitza leman podisili bona, bayeling kore, etabele kore, mutomungama, kamotaska metro reili, ra hotila, yangmela ya bona kore. Di lozeti di zuang lebo, spara para motele, ndiskatola di bateng. Di lozeti zari shortcut, ora habu fita mo stishi ne mutabatwa, stishi ne kamol, ai lo kozaga nkele, ndiskatola e bateng. Ra kobolo ka yangba chopa, yano kore, baname la di traina mo godimu, kamo batala, e ba traina, e ba overloaded. Because if there is a delay, it is important to take it seriously. Because if there is a delay, it is important to take it seriously. Because if there is a delay, it is important to take it seriously. Because if there is a delay, it is important to take it seriously. Because if there is a delay, it is important to take it seriously. Because if there is a delay, it is important to take it seriously. Because if there is a delay, it is important to take it seriously. Because if there is a delay, it is important to take it seriously. Because if there is a delay, it is important to take it seriously. Because if there is a delay, it is important to take it seriously. Because if there is a delay, it is important to take it seriously. Because if there is a delay, it is important to take it seriously. Because if there is a delay, it is important to take it seriously. Because if there is a delay, it is important to take it seriously.
Greetings to the chairperson and your committee, your portfolio at large. Allow me to introduce myself. My name is Stephen Tamaha. I'm standing here before you from Ward 81. From the public safety, you know, our council, their public safety. Sorry for my... Well, chairperson, let me bring this to your attention. We don't have a reliable space, you know, that is conducive within our area of living, particularly at Ward 81, where I'm coming from. It seems like we're only focusing on trains that are moving goods from one place to another, but we are not putting our focus on trains that are supposed to be supporting or transporting people. So, we need availability of trains so that people can access them freely, you know, without struggling. Because back in time, we never had to have this particular problem. But we urge you to avail train for the community. And most importantly, obviously, you need to involve the community, you know, to discuss issues relating to what they need to participate on, especially on the bill. You need to engage with the community so that they can put their inputs and suggestions forward, so that whatever that you implement will be to the best interest of the community. Chairperson, also, point of importance is the issue of the system that is being used currently. We need to do away with the old system and perhaps implement the electronic system that will make life easier because we're moving with times now. So, when we have the electronic system, you know, that includes our WhatsApp groups that will be able to communicate issues relating to low-shedding, movement of train in terms of timings. This will actually easy our life when there is such communication. For instance, if there's low-shedding and this information is shared through the WhatsApp groups, people will be informed whenever the timings for the trains have changed, etc., etc. Would you know that taxis are expensive and we are relying on the train as the cheapest mode of transport? So, we urge you that do re-implement the usage of train that is sufficient and effective and accessible to the public. Last but not least, in terms of security and safety, I also urge you to look into the community police forums. The CPS, you know, involve also the councillors in this process to make sure that our people are involved in assisting others, you know, to avoid the free rides and people are taking advantage of these trains, you know, without following the proper procedures. That's all from my side. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Good afternoon and thank you, committee, for having this engagement session with us as the community. My name is Tracy Anandam and I represent Ward 32. The portfolio that I speak on behalf of is the portfolio of transport. Listening to the comments that came out here today, I think firstly, well done on the proposed bill. The concern here is for the improvement of safety for passengers and freight. And I think right now, my concentration is on the human element, so that's people. And I would like to perhaps propose something to the committee that we create an education and awareness campaign regarding the safety concerns for different communities. That could be done in collaboration with the ward committees that are currently in existence and together with the other role players in the industries such as your Prasa and Cloudtrain and the Transnet sector. Having an education platform that will move into our communities and educate children, educate employees in the workplace on how to actually utilise the facility is something that would be fundamental in propelling this bill that you have now spent so much of time in preparing. I think the loss of life is critical and where we can bypass that by creating education in terms of pamphlets that could be circulated, a video that could be put together and circulated to schools and via media platforms and billboards and television. I think that would prove successful in terms of creating awareness. In terms of this campaign, perhaps set up a subcommittee that would regulate the rollout of this campaign and then report back to the newly elected board that would come into play once this bill has been passed. I think that would just be a recommendation from me. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your understanding. My name is Tracy Anandam. And I have listened to the interview that was given today. I want to talk about the safety of passengers and good room, but I want to focus on the human element here. I have a thought to try to promote education and awareness to make it safer with the use of trains. I think it is also necessary that the role players along with the work committees in Prasa, in Cloudtrain and in this more work together to promote education. Where workers and workers are encouraged to use the facility and also to be safe there. Life-threatening is critical. And I think to make this work, it is necessary to use this platform, using pamphlets, videos, where also television advertisements, etc., to encourage people to be safe with the road. Then I have a thought that there should be a subcommittee implemented or placed for promoting education and awareness. And then this subcommittee will return to the new committee that is placed when this is implemented. Thank you for your understanding and also my participation.
Good morning, good evening, good afternoon. Hello, government. I am Charles Numpozolo from Ibu Ripaki, Ward 77. I put for you my safety and security. I don't know what to say, I don't know what to say. I don't know what to say. Because I think the government, the government is here. Safety and security. Because I think the government is here. It is here, it is here, it is reported, it is here. Because the government is here. Because it is the committee, it is the Ward Committee. I don't know what to say, I don't know what to say. Because the safety is here. And if you want to see this, it is safe and security. Because of safety. Because of safety. When you hear that, the government is here. The government is here. Because 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 it is here. Because it is here. Because it is here. Because it is here. Because the South Africa is here. Because the less policy train or low train, the longer it takes. The 2% is here and 10% is here. The border is here. It is here. It is the committee here. It is the safety code. It is the government's mission. Every day, it is here. Because I think the power is here. Because it 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 is here. Because the proposal of the government is here. Because it 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 is here. Ibu, government, the Ward Committee, the bad, the worst. Because I want to be here, I want to be here. Government, I want to be here. Because it is here. Please, I want to be here. Because it is here. Because I want to be here. Because it is here.
I greet you all. My name is Charles Numpozolo. I am from Ward 77 and I am a Ward Committee member for safety and security portfolio. I greet the government before me. But we do not have a government or it could be that the government does not listen. We have issues of safety, which are very old issues, but nothing has been done or it could be that the government is not listening. We have Ward Committee members who, or we as Ward Committee members, do not sleep and we do not even eat because we have lots and lots of problems. We are not safe. I think the government should just remove informal settlements. The government should remove them because they are the main reason we have problems. Well, when the government removes them, or the government is the main reason why we have problems because the government keeps on saying that there is no land. There are issues of drugs and you are fully aware of this, but you are not doing anything. And these railway lines that you want to fix, who are you going to fix them for? Because only 2% of the people who are working in the risk are not working. We have committees, we have security, we have security people as well, but we keep on being charged daily. We are facing problems daily and we are being killed daily as well. Whenever we try to attend matters, we ourselves get into trouble. I'm very glad that you are here. And I'm just wondering, how long will it take before you pass this bill? There have been many other issues discussed before, but we have no idea where they ended up. How long will it take before you discuss this, I mean, before you pass this bill? And in final matter, I would like to know if you really care about us as Ward Committee members. Can you go back and discuss issues pertaining to Ward Committee members? Thank you.
Good morning. I am Nonsigelol Laja. I am here in Ward 13. I put for you my safety and security. I want to tell you what to say. Because, okay, I want to say. Because I want to be here. Because I want to be here. So, I want to be here. And I want to be here. Why do you want to be here? Because I want to be here. 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 Because it is here. Because it is here. Because it is here. Because I want to be 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 here.
Thank you for the opportunity. My name is Nonsigelol Laja. Since we are talking about issues of safety and security, my concern is regarding the patrollers who assist the community. Because it looks as if these patrollers are not considered by those in authority and these patrollers, they don't sleep at night. They are always patrolling our communities. Even the communities trust patrollers more than the police. Because police, when you call them, they do not even have the decency to come to your place. And but the patrollers are always the first to arrive because they look at this issue of community safety. But when employment opportunities comes along, these patrollers are not considered. Those in authority hire other people, they overlook these patrollers. I think this system, as long as we have this system of tenders, I don't think that we will be able to fight crime. Because those people, they just take, they hire other people who do not know the dynamics of safety around those communities. So, I am asking you that when there are job opportunities in this...
So I am asking you that when there are job opportunities in this project, please consider these patrolers. Because they are the ones who accompany the community members to be safe when they go to the stations in the morning. That is why I am proposing that these patrolers must be considered when there are job opportunities. As you are saying, that there is a possibility of opening up opportunities for safety patrolers in the trains. These people, the patrolers, have been accompanying the community from the morning to the stations. I think that they are also capable, or they will be capable, to look into safety in the trains. I am making a humble plea that you consider these patrolers. Thank you very much.
Sanbonan, spongal thuba kutse sngakuluma pam gwen. Ngum lhabasho ngwe from Ward 103, Development Planning. My contribution is around railway safety regulator board and management, more on the governance of the board. The proposal is that non-executive members serve for three-year term, which is renewable, but for a total of two consecutive terms. In the private sector, non-executive members serve, on average, about nine years. They add to the independence of boards, the sustainability of programs. So my suggestion would be to consider the term for non-executive boards to at least match the political cycle, which is five years, and to allow them to serve up to ten years being two consecutive terms. I think the idea of having a three-year term means every three-year cycle, the boards would have to be re-looked. Meanwhile, their contribution is... They make a contribution. One of the contributions is they will appoint two nominees for CEO, amongst other contributions to the board, which is very vital to any entity. Thank you.
Gwene meragba, danki ferege leentide. Wat ek wel wunume is, wanyer dit kom by di utfurunde raadse termain. This is the commonness what ek hait is, om te oerveeg da ri termain eder na tien jar verling word. Wat or tue termaine gedin kan word, in stere van di huidige struktiir van di termain op hiiri stadium. Ek denk om dit so te verander en te wijzig, salba meer voortjeelig wees vir di komitees en hi di raade as gejo. Gwene danki.
Dumelang, kina... Okay. Kina Pritimoyo from Ward 121, Region G, portfolio yaka di transport. Na konseena karapangor governmental karatusha kayon. It's like youth, most of youth i duti kadi qualification ni. Ha i duti aitolim sebese, i play to like, i tusu kadi call center, zetze baropang. Maralebo one, but tell us something from the call center. And then the other thing, scout from sebese from eighteen to thirty-five. Banaba ba tusu provide, ha ba twa di granting za di three fifty. Ba na ba kwaza, ne ba bulai, endo tella roba twa dafet, sa oba ta di jo komo twa ding. Baban ba hara sele ba twa di babon. The other thing ka governmental narubonangor ere feila kayon. Ki retirement iaro na babang, body sixty years, from sixty to sixty-five. But banaba duti parliamenting, ba over seventy, seventy-five, babang ba retire eighty years. And then the other thing happened ki, ana rekupariki, kupa governmental kara assista ko kat ere buele li JMPD because of scholar transport. Scholar transport i di Kenya banadi puti. Ba yeta banadi overload. So how wou wou le mu trabom wame, ba wut se pisao shua, ba wut se pisaa engsora ba tsaba. I kisali karatusha ka JMPD, i du le monalindi scholar transporti ting. I cheke ba na ba hono assasara, ba na ba hona ba tsama ya jran. And the last thing ki, ya di ward commit, ralebo akadi ward committee patrila ra receiver eh. Di bek ete. Di bek, bek ene refue eh. Beki bol penny power bank ilistik, but iki speke bek ya laptop. So aradi tol, baban ba tawana di smartphone, and the tonsore submite ka di smartphone. So rekupari ritusenimo.
I greet you all. My name is Pritimoyo. I'm from Ward 121, Region 9. And I'm on the portfolio for transport. I think we need a lot of assistance from the government, more especially with regard to the youth. The youth are sitting at home with qualifications, but that are not being utilized. They are actually being helped by working at call centers. Although the call centers are actually treating them unfairly in terms of salary, but at least they help. Another thing is this thing of these eighteen to thirty-five years, where the youth are given priority. They are not taught to be independent. Because they come from receiving grants and then they go to being given priorities and they are not supportive at home. They use that money that they get to drink and do crime and are not helping their parents. Their parents are supposed to help and carry a lot of load. Whereas they are very... They're using whatever it is that they have in a wrong way to commit crime and to drink. The government is failing us with this issue of retiring at between sixty to sixty-five. Whereas they are sitting in parliament, some of them are between seventy-five and eighty. So I think it's unfair. Let us be given chance as adults, even when we read the retirement age, so that we can be useful and be able to end as well. Another issue is scholar transport. We need the government to provide JMPD so that they should supervise the way the scholar... The people who own scholar transport are behaving. We get threats when we talk or when we try to advise because they overload those vehicles and it is very dangerous for the schoolchildren. So we need JMPD assistance. The last... The last thing, as Ward committees, we are thankful that we got bags. Those bags, those bags contains power banks, chargers and pens. But the problem is that those bags are for laptops. They are not of value to us. We need something that is relevant. I thank you.
Sanbonan. Oi kama ngomanga, magama kanya, nyesbongo. From Ward 19, go public safety. Go public safety. Mbagu. Okay, mbagu. Hey man, si slanganis katjesnisi mama, nama tu umsibinsa mama ni. Abant abachabla. Hey man, gunen kenga serias. Gunen kenga serias. Abant bairo chwe, gumare railway lines. Eighteen inside the train, outside the train, outside the stations. I think it go melagunswi, gunswi something alo. Cause tchola abantu ngapadku train.
Si ajteela, si asguti, iskatino, go si ambile. Aspani ke, aspalalele, maybe so feala gaabo, no by indication. Ogo disizwile, so aspani ke no go, only three a she ke, aspalale.
Mbagu. Bestela man, ngapadku train, uenza, omatukum sibinsa. Man, ngapadku train, guben abant abakata. Outside the station, paratku station, guben abant abakata. Cause an bairo chwapa, tamakastama ba gurelwe, wangela warochwa. Including na go, outside go eighteen shims, guben abant abakata. But the challenge is, you give a good pick. The challenge is, you give a good pick. Casha, casha ma private security companies, inge ngikala la. All those processes, sengas kuluma, zo wangela, kutisfu na guben janjan. But as long as has obu yela bo na foot, ayen kibasis nganiks, abant abakala ba shala ngakona. Reason why? Private security, the only thing aso yenza, isoslande, lumudua yewan from another province. O mudua guledu, lukishala ngalapa, kape benefiti butongalo. So bestela, njo ba gugu shu oktu. Gunama patrolers, shu oktu, nama wut commita fast rated, cause no one respects them. The system nga pa, imali na ni, ba ba promisindu, es ngakonanga, gunswi. Patrolers, ashesa kona, daddy wa nabasa, ba ba kata all these hot spots. Ogu timan, gunune problem, ama customers agarelu, ibaya banjungunzi la payana. Nabantu ngabasis, please, aban normala. But if ever, bestela, njo guti, nan ngensha, i, i ngabasis. Ogu ti gube i ba katalo, zo indaba, gube i ba kati thi, gube nindu streeti, gube nindu percentage eti. Straight eh, gube guti. The percentage eh, ma patrolers, eh, ma ward committee, eh, nkuzo ba klienakja. Cause in the, in the ngajablis, guti, naseniswa, nasen to ti, gunswi wangelo. Uzosola gule situation, nganke na low private security company. Isoslande labantu from other provinces. So sisolos, sasalos, fast rated. Bo yefutu, isha ma ward commit, yempela, yempela, ma ward committee, ah, fast rated. Cause including, eh, the upper structure, no, no, I recognize a maxo, na melasso indoors or something. There we have patrolers, we have ward committees. Ne bazo indoors, gunene meeting, so guti, sben abantipay format, that's called the ward committees. But still, man, a match is to face on the ground too much. People abasai, 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 abaki chimela police station, na nganeproblem, iman, lukshin, es shala ngaku. Bakaki chimela git, we are the one, mesu la le ma police station, abangas recognize, na ba footes ward committees. Yit meleso la gula ma police station, slade two hours, five hours, lemene si slade, abangas recognize. Nanga, nama upper structure, eh, is recognize everywhere, na le ma ledisniga, honest. They step in the corner. Asja, please, cause we end up score, una sentindu ilini, je, egmele sisen, sengabantu siapin. Uzotola guti, lenisniga, ona, meleso pecha samwe, bestela man. Ansam, ngunswi nganon. Ilo, begi karamis.
Good afternoon, my name is Madra Makanya. Greetings to the committee. I'm from Ward 19. And I serve on a public committee on public safety. And we have very serious challenges around railway stations because people are being raped there in the trains, as well as in the stations and outside the stations. So I am asking the authorities to consider employing people from the community so that they are able to stabilize safety around the stations and in the railway. And they will assist with protecting the infrastructure and also assist in looking into the issue of safety inside the trains as well as outside the stations. The problem that we have, the major problem, is that the government is employing private security companies. And these private security companies, most of the time, they come with their people. They employ people from other provinces and the locals do not benefit anything in job opportunities that comes along with those projects. And the patrolers, I am also emphasizing this issue. I know other speakers have spoken about it. That let us take care of our patrolers because they assist our communities a lot and we think that they must be assisted. When there are job opportunities, they must be prioritized. Because as long as you are using private security companies, I don't think that the, our patrolers in their communities will be able to benefit in such opportunities. And as Ward committee members, we encounter a lot of problems in our communities. Because when people have problems, when they are victims of crime, they do not go to the police, but they come to us for assistance. And it is us who accompany them to the police station. And when we arrive there, we also have a challenge because the police officers do not recognize us. We will wait there up until we get attended to. So that is another issue that we must work together with the police. So I am asking this committee to use their influence to assist the patrolers. Because even the communities trust them more than the police. And they are assisting the communities because they are also part of those communities. Thank you very much.
Dumelang kamoka. Waimi moki Rachel Magola, Alexander, portfolio yaka di transportu, kewela under Ward 76. Kamu di training raqua, rala. Beru chopala gore, bayta pelebarena, kamu garaga di training. Obago banarana male di training, arsa hona lo gali mpopa kadi training. Kamu garo hona le ba tchola, ma regishadi uko bachi. Kamu garo wanu ba tchola, ma sorway di po. Beru chopala lo na ilikishwe, security lo na ebetight. Obago bani, le ma police are na gaberik. Kitana kamu di patrolling, ne kamu di ward committee. Rana le problem, eh, di kansela charena. Di kansela, go hona le problem, kamu Alexander, obaga kadi ward committee, obaga kadi patrol. Eh, ho ba le ba tata, ma police are attachiti di ward committee, di fiti di patrol, eh, di fiti. Beru chopala, ne kamu spodise ngi, litisheng matso. Ban ma police are na gaberik. Rana rebaraka la ki di patrol, abarakaka la ki di ward committee. Kitoko pala, ali di transport, go na li di koloi, kamu garo, rechel ba, wanina mecha, banaba rena. Chel ba no, koloye, go na warway, lebelela, ochencha, number plate, kancha la kancha. Koloi, cha gana tinaga, di ne di brick. Disraka shitudi alaisha, me di strate, ntraka di laisha, di scrap. Loche di laisha, cheni, galika blala ba tchola, di scraping, gore. Eh, retsu ba ba di, ba 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 kaleba di ra. Ba kaleba reki, ba ba ba, i sha kodi scrapa, i sha ba ba tchola eh. Mara checha di tini, eh, loche kamkaga chona, bariki bo mkhresi, loche ya go scrap, scrap, go ra lebelela, sa to ba kamu. Di loche arna ide ajeo, ma singa ajeo, go na go. Banaba rena ba felela mo di drugs eh, banaba rena ki di nyaope. Because of, ma police are wa abijor, manachu. Ba tchola mo tuwa, bracha di drugs, today wa boya. En ra ba zba ra ba bochi, mara felela, go felela mo ye. Ra chopala, retusheng, ra ho ba la. Hosto sa ba le di koloi, di na mecha, di loche ti chona, di crepe, di na mecha, di chodi ya go scrap, di crepe ti di zole. Wan ki chona, di bija mufo, di kamu garaga li keshi. Ra chopala, swet swet. Lama felela, ba ke chopala gore, bayta pele, ra chopala chen. Baba go li di timo di tilo. Ritile afro, ba tchola, se tla, kamu garaga mo. So rekitala ra za may, bariki efu fa, kamu shuan. So, rela pilan, so rekitala, go na ridu, na tchota may, galika ribi cha, breakfast, ra chopala chen. Le man chon, kuila, so rekitala, kiala bo.
Greetings all. My name is Rachel Magola and I'm from Alexander. My portfolio is transport under Ward 76. We have serious problems to address with you, our leaders, and this is a plea. Inside our trains, there's a lot of drugs. We are being marked there because of the security there, it's not tight. In our communities, the only help that we get is from our patrolers and our Ward committee, community councils. The police are not there to help us. There's also vehicles that change number plates or sometimes they do not have number plates. Some of them, they have no plates. We know that before scrapyard, we used to take cans and other things. But today, they take our property and take it there to those scrapyards. And afterwards, our children start using drugs. So it's a plea, you are saying, please close these scrapyards. Lastly, our leaders. We have been here for so long. We have elderly people here. We are hungry. So sometimes we came, we came here and we did not have breakfast. So please, you want us to come here, please feed us so that we can participate well. Thank you.
Sanbonani. Niabulise parliament, ngbulise, esize now. Ei kama ngujabili wakan gosi. I'm from Ward 121, portfolio yami, it development and planning. Benguela, bapati beju. Ngalanisinnage, sibalulegi, lempakatin. Nilani kona gunat, ogningi ngabanaz. Yit eski chimayo, siyo reporter in, siyo reporter in. Ninanisema meeting in, marani sipi thousand rand, marasin zuleni lap. Ama patrola, me la trito enjeng ama poisa. Ama poisa user i petroleum states for nothing. Njo ba ku itri namshanch, sizo shanga nanawema tavern. Astoka, i patrola lguazu ke tavern. Lika de abantu, ngenda ba yoku ti poisa, dazin avail themselves masmati. Benguela, ngonile uminista, ukipile ama rehab center. Abant donabetu ma ba buya eri hepu, bayenzani, maganga sapem. Ngobimise benza itola ka. Utasho abant es ngabas, umduan upume rehab, usindi le gulembu ban. Magavu yubuya shale foot, abone ka makeluane, uktisatengi iswalend. Na iveni ama poisi zo kolek, i kolek iveni ama pois. Umduan ahaalele, ayo choncha foot, e trainini, i indambosa ka hulumen. Ukti azopem, ngoba ti nenzi nasena wa matapawe, pawateti. O government uya azu, guti, i youth le eighteen up to thirty-five. We are almost left with seventy percent abnormal. Angaz kutikasho oban ku eighteen up to thirty-five. Ngoba inlela yonke ma uhamba, papete ama trolli, bayo tengi se i crepyat, ukti ba buye ba pem. Sitkala nisinnagele logo, hulumen wetesimtandai. Niabong.
I greet you all, I greet. I greet you all, I greet members of parliament and I greet the public who are here with me. My name is Shabulengosi, I am from Ward 121. I would like government to please consider us because we are very important. You are here because of us. We are the ones who go out there to the public and you are still paying us just a thousand rand. What is a thousand rand? We have patrolers who should be treated like the police because they are the ones who are doing police work. We find the police busy collecting and stalking in the taverns, but the patrolers, they don't do that, they don't stalk. There are also people who have been in rehab centers, which is a wonderful thing that government has come up with. But once they are done with rehab, what happens to those people? They go back to their neighborhoods and then they find that their neighbors are still selling drugs. And then they become tempted to go and purchase, but they don't even have money for that. Hence they go and steal lines from the railway tracks and they sell those items. We don't even have tipaways at home anymore because they've sold them. There's also this issue of the eighteen thirty-five. Can we be considered as those who are above this age? We also find that those people or those children who smoke drugs are the ones who are just taking those items from railway stations and moving around with them to sell them so that they can purchase these drugs. I thank you.
Thank you very much, thank you very much. Can we ask that we give ourselves a big round of applause? Part of democracy is to listen to the people. And the people have spoken and said they are hungry. So we will not be continuing with any other inputs. But secondly, I think towards the end, people could realize that most of the issues were said, so they raised other issues which are also burning them. So thank you so much for the whole community, for taking your time, for coming here and speaking to us. It is not in vain. What will happen here after is that this is the third province. We are finishing off next year. We are doing six provinces. We plan to finish by the end of March, by which even if you still want to do written comments, you can still do that. After that, as a committee, we will gather and deliberate on all the inputs and those that can enrich the legislation will certainly be considered. So with those few words, I want to say a big thank you to each and everyone who has made time to come here on a Saturday. There are much more pressing and competing issues that you could have been doing. But maybe before I say what will happen, let's remind ourselves that we are still in a sixteen days of activism, which started on the twenty-fifth of November until the tenth of December. Each and every one of us has got a role, particularly us men. Let's challenge gender stereotypes. Let's not condone violence against women and children. Let's challenge sexist jokes and remarks, which normally we do amongst us as men. Let's not see women as objects. They can wear what they want to wear. It is not our responsibility. So let us speak up. Don't look away when you see somebody being abused. Let us protect the women, let us protect children and the vulnerable. So thank you so much. We will request that as we close the meeting, there is a lunch that is going to be served. So we request that we remain in our seats and we will be directed so that we can be orderly as we receive our lunch. The meeting is adjourned. Thank you so much.